Today is Tuesday, July 2nd, 2024, and this is the City Council's regular meeting. I am calling to order and giving notice to the City Council and to the general public that at this meeting, the City Council may vote to go into executive session, which will not be open to the public, for discussion and consultation with the city's attorneys for legal advice on any item listed on the following agenda. Can we have roll call? Mayor Daggett?
Here.
Vice Mayor Asland?
Here.
Councilmember Harris?
Here.
Councilmember House?
Here.
Councilmember Matthews?
Here.
Councilmember McCarthy?
Here.
Councilmember Sweet?
Here.
Councilmember Matthews, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Please stand if you're able.
I pledge allegiance to the flagstaff of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
The mission of the City of Flagstaff is to protect and enhance the quality of life for all. And Councilmember McCarthy?
The Flagstaff City Council humbly acknowledges the ancestral homelands of this area's indigenous nations and original stewards. These lands, still inhabited by native descendants, border mountains sacred to indigenous peoples. We honor them, their legacies, their traditions, and their continued contributions. We celebrate their past, present, and future generations, who will forever know this place as home.
Thank you. Next up, we have Open Call to the Public. This enables the public to address the council about items that are -- or any item that's not on tonight's agenda. Comments related to items that are on the agenda will be taken at the time that item is discussed. Open Call to the Public appears on the agenda twice, at the beginning and at the end. The total time allotted for this call to the public, the first one, is 30 minutes. Any additional comments will be held until the second. We'll need a comment card from you, which you can get from the back if you'd like to speak. You have three minutes, and there is a timer up here. And council during Open Call to the Public can't interact with you, ask you questions, answer questions, and so forth. So we will start with Alan Wininger.
My name's Alan Winiger, and -- is that better?
Yes.
Thank you, sorry. My name's Alan Winiger. I'm with the Route 66 Centennial, and I'm here to, I guess, start the conversation because I haven't seen one. The 100th anniversary of Route 66, which is the road that's right out here, is going to be drawing in millions of people, starting now, for the next two years. Been working on this centennial now for -- since 2019. I've been working with the National Commission. I'm also a consultant with several other states and several other programs, including the AAA. Speaking of which, I just got back from Tulsa, and you all should have a sticker that says Williams Centennial. There's not one for Flagstaff, and that's that. The officers can't have one out. I'm finding out that that's one of the most common things that's asked by kids when they see an officer's for a sticker. I've noticed in the past that you've put up the decals on businesses and things like that. I was one of the instigators for the new logo that exists, that was approved by the council, that is supposedly supposed to be put at the train station. So that's already been designed and approved. It just needs to be applied. That branding is important, because the City of Flagstaff is not getting the recognition it deserves for Route 66. There's, you know, when you look at Williams and you look at Winslow and all the other locations, and then I've moved here about three years ago, and I see a stark difference. And when I was in Tulsa, this is just, you know, visually, but the way they promote themselves being a part of Route 66 is night and day. I think the city needs to form a commission or form a group that is focused on what can be applied for the centennial, for the awareness for Flagstaff. I think it's been, you know, kind of pushed under the rug, because we're way behind. This city should be one of the main focuses, because from what I understand and what I've seen and what I've heard, this is a popular destination. But we need to show that when they get here. So that's, you know, that's my comment.
Thank you. Dr. Emily Davalos.
I didn't prepare my thoughts today, so I apologize for their disorganized nature. I'm assuming you read the email from Dan Folk in response to my public comments last week. And I figured it'd be useful to let the public know that if a building requirement of the plumbing code states toilet facilities will be provided for construction workers, and such facilities shall be maintained in a sanitary condition, actually, if the building permit owner lives a mile and a half or three miles away, tells the workers they can just use the bathroom at his house, that qualifies for that building permit requirement. Seems a bit ridiculous to me why the words "onsite" aren't included in there. So does that only apply to local business or permit holders? Can they have an Airbnb within three miles of the building site, and that just qualifies? They don't have to have a toilet on-site? Does this work if there's just a public bathroom within a mile and a half, three miles, so you don't actually have to have a toilet on-site? Which, if you're telling me, after seeing workers pee on-site, that they're actually going to stop and go travel a mile and a half to three miles to use the bathroom, I highly doubt that that's actually what's going to happen. So it'd be great if you would add "onsite," and I think other people, the public, should know that if there's a bathroom a mile and a half, three miles away from your building site, that meets the building -- sorry, let me read that out loud. That meets the requirement of the plumbing code. So I think you might want to take care of this, because then, if people don't live here and they don't have a house to offer their workers, is that discriminatory enforcement of that code? It's ridiculous. It's absolutely ridiculous. And this building permit owner continues to just disregard code. He parks in ways that violate the traffic code, and the city does nothing about it. You've read your own staff's written word, that he continues to operate in bad faith. Nothing happens. It's been years. So hopefully, the public's aware of this as well.
Thanks. Thank you. Alicia Formanak?
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council. My name's Alicia Formanak, and behind me are also league members of High Altitude Roller Derby. My roller derby name is Minifridge. I'm the current president of High Altitude Roller Derby, Flagstaff's local roller derby league. High Altitude Roller Derby is a nonprofit that's been around in Flagstaff since 2012. We have 45 active members and an internationally-ranked A-team named the Dark Sky Starlets, in reference to the world's first international dark sky city in which they were founded. If you don't know much about roller derby, the one takeaway I would like you to leave with today is that roller derby is more than just a sport. It's a powerful community builder that fosters acceptance and inclusivity. High Altitude Roller Derby brings individuals together of Flagstaff from diverse backgrounds and creates a supportive and empowering environment. The inclusive nature of the sport welcomes people of all genders, body types, and skill levels, promoting a culture of acceptance and belonging. This sense of community is further strengthened through volunteer efforts, our local charity work, and outreach programs, which help to create a positive impact on Flagstaff and reinforce values of teamwork, respect, and unity. At a previous City Council meeting, I highlighted the challenges we face in securing a practice space. And since losing our practice space at Flagstaff Junior Academy, we have been sharing the space at Mount Eldon Middle School with other local sports groups. Despite the support from FUSD, the increasing demand for the gymnasium space means our practice time is set to be significantly reduced, from 12 hours over four days to nearly half in the fall. This reduction severely impacts our ability to accommodate all skill levels, from beginners to our A-level travel team. Today, I'm here to reiterate the urgent need for a multipurpose indoor sports complex in Flagstaff. Our climate, with its cold temperatures, rain, smoky conditions from wildfires, necessitates an indoor facility where the community can stay active year-round. Such a facility would not only benefit roller derby, but also other sports and activities like pickleball, volleyball, indoor soccer, and roller hockey. We are not alone in this need. Many other sports groups in Flagstaff would greatly benefit from a dedicated indoor space. A multipurpose indoor sports complex would serve as a central hub for community health and wellness, fostering physical activity, and providing a safe, weatherproof environment for all. We urge you to consider the development of this much-needed facility as a priority agenda item. Your support can make a significant difference in sustaining and growing the vibrant sports culture in Flagstaff. Thank you for your time and consideration. We look forward to your support in making this vision a reality.
Thank you. Kinggada Callen?
Excuse me, Madam Chair, council members, City Manager and team. I first and foremost would like to thank you all for allowing me this opportunity to introduce myself. My name is Kinggada Callen, and I'm the new Executive Director for the Southside Community Association. I would love and want to give a special recognition and shout-out to Councilwoman Deborah Harris for her commitment and steadfast work in the community. Four years ago, when my wife and I moved here to Flag -- well, I live in Williams, but my wife and I moved here to Flagstaff, I saw a building with a mural on it, and I went inside, and I said, "What's this?" And Councilwoman Harris was there, and she said, "This is the Murdoch Center. Do you know who Cleo Murdoch is?" And I got that education. And she asked, "Do you want to serve?" I said, "Absolutely." So for four years, I've been the treasurer, and when this opportunity was afforded to me, I just feel very blessed and fortunate. There's four initiatives that we're going to continue to build on that Councilwoman Harris has steadfast with, and that's the Live Black Experience Community Initiative, as well as the Resilience Hub. We've been selected for the Resilience Hub. And then the Murdoch Center itself for the community, and then as well as the Juneteenth Recognition and Celebration. So the vision and goal is to build upon the foundation that was already there. You guys will see a lot of me, because I will keep you updated, informed, and involved. So thank you very much, and I hope you feel better, Mayor Daggett. Have a good day.
Thank you. All right. That is all that we have for Open Call to the Public. So moving down to Proclamations and Recognition, we'll start with Arbor Day, which is going to be read by Councilmember Harris. So anyone who is here for Arbor Day, please join us at the edge of the dais. And then the second is Disability Pride Month, which will be read by Councilmember Matthews.
Whereas Flagstaff is situated in the world's largest ponderosa pine forest, and whereas it is universally recognized that healthy forests can provide multiple ecosystem services, including reducing erosion, stormwater runoff, moderating temperatures, improving air quality, storing carbon dioxide, producing oxygen, and providing habitat for wildlife; and whereas trees enhance Flagstaff's economic vitality and aesthetics; and whereas on August 14th, 2024, Flagstaff will celebrate Arbor Day with an invasive tree walk, as well as several tree planting events; and whereas trees, particularly known invasive, non-invasive trees, wherever they grow, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now therefore, I, on behalf of Becky Daggett, Mayor of the City of Flagstaff, do hereby proclaim August 14th, 2024, as Arbor Day in Flagstaff. So, thank you.
Let's make sure, and then if you'd like to say something.
Can we get some trees up here?
Would you like to say anything?
Great. Thank you very much, Council, for recognizing the proclamation here for trees. I just thought I'd let you know that for the past 16 years, the City of Flagstaff has been recognized as a Tree City USA member, and we do this with a number of the efforts from divisions in the city. I also want to let you know, on August 14th, the day of Arbor Day, we will have a tree walk at 3:30 in one of our neighborhoods, followed by a community tree planting at Bushmaster around 4:30. So we'll be sending out some additional information about these events. Thanks.
Is there anyone here from -- the Americans Disability Act? All right. This proclamation, whereas the Americans with Disabilities Act, ADA, was passed by Congress on July 26, 1990, to ensure the civic civil rights of citizens with disabilities; and whereas the ADA prevents discrimination based on disability, requires that employees provide reasonable accommodations, and ensures that the public places, thoroughfares, and sidewalks meet accessibility requirements; and whereas disability is a diverse identity in and of itself, encompassing those with all types of differences; and whereas disability should in no way diminish one's right to independence, self-determination, or engagement with society, but rather should be celebrated aspect of one's personhood; and whereas segregation and discrimination on the basis of ability persist, depriving individuals with disability from full participation in our society; and whereas the creation of equitable and inclusive environments is a matter of social justice and must be the shared responsibility of each of us in order to -- in order for true change to occur; and whereas we recognize the value and intersectionality of disability experience in our lives, acknowledge and address the barriers presented to individuals with disabilities in our society, and appreciate the diversity makes our city stronger; whereas disability pride enables people with disabilities to redefine their identity with self-worth, serves as a tool to tackle ableism, bias, discrimination, and reshapes false negative perceptions of individuals with disabilities as people with value, talents, and significance; and whereas this month, the City of Flagstaff celebrates the countless talents, experiences, and contributions of individuals with disabilities, and reaffirms its commitment to make meaningful action to build a city that is accessible and inclusive to all. Now therefore, I, on behalf of Becky Daggett, Mayor of the City of Flagstaff, Arizona, do hereby proclaim July 2024 as Disability Pride Month throughout the City of Flagstaff. Stacy, do we have anyone from the commission online? Okay. Thank you, everyone. Next up, we have July Work Aniversaries.
I'm Joanne Keane, Deputy City Manager for the City of Flagstaff, here to give you an update on our July Work Aniversaries. We have several first-year anniversaries. If you recall, last month, we did not have many anniversaries. We have quite a few in July, probably because we just started our fiscal year. So congratulations to our finance folks for the start of the new fiscal year. Several first-year anniversaries, including in our management services, PROs, Water Services, Fire, Library. Continuing, we also have a construction inspector in our Engineering Division, again, Library, Building Permit Tech, and a maintenance worker. Going into our five-year anniversaries, and just a reminder, when we put photos in these presentations, we do allow our staff to select the photos that are included in here. Some of them are their professional photos, and some of them, obviously, you can see here, are personal photos of things that they enjoy. The first five-year anniversary is Christopher Green, who is a Recreation Official One in PROs. Second is Ryan Medley, who's celebrating five years. He's a police officer. Jared Bone is a Water Services Operator. Clearly, his photo is of him out in the field, doing the great work that he does for the City of Flagstaff. Ten-year anniversaries, just as a reminder. I'm not sure this is actually a real photo, but this is Kevin Fensel, who is our Deputy City Attorney, who was not happy with his current -- the photo that was included in the presentation, and decided to go way back to a fake photo of him playing football. So congratulations to Kevin, and thanks for your humor. You bring it in everything you do. Armando Cruz is also celebrating a 10-year anniversary. He's a facilities maintenance worker. Jessica Young, in our Discover Flagstaff, is a Sales Specialist, is also celebrating a 10-year anniversary. Moving into 20 years, Chris Samples is a Fire Captain Paramedic, and congratulations to 20 years, and thank you for your service. Chris Romero, also in Fire, is a Fire Engineer Paramedic. 25 years is Scott Strohmeier. He's a Fire Captain. 30 years, our first, I think we have a couple of 30-year anniversaries. The first 30-year anniversary is Trish Palaka, who actually works in the Tuba City Public Library. She's worked in the public library for 30 years. She's committed to her work and is resourceful in carrying out her daily duties. She works with a team, and her colleagues Pearl, Sina, and Delmar all operate the Tuba City Public Library. And together, they make selections for library materials while weeding out outdated and damaged materials. She's courteous, patient, and respectful among library patrons and library staff county-wide. Trish resolves matters with a cool and calm demeanor, and is always willing to help with tasks that arise, including offering recommendations and implementation of library programs and grant monies. She's an invaluable employee to the Flagstaff City-County Library System. Congratulations, Trish, and thank you for your service to the city. Our 30-year anniversary today is Kathleen Harrison Phasery. I hope I got that right. I just asked Jessica. She began her employment with the Flagstaff Municipal Court in July of 1989 as a Court Clerk I. Through the years, she promoted to Court Clerk II, and ultimately to Deputy Court Administrator in May of 2001. She continues to serve in this capacity, where she oversees court services. She's extremely dependable, highly respected, and is an essential member of the court. The court is appreciative of Kathleen's hard work. We thank her for her dedication and congratulate her on her 35-year work anniversary. And I did just learn that she's currently on vacation, so that's great news. And that is all I have today. Mayor and Council, thank you for giving me the opportunity to recognize our amazing employees. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Joanne, and thank you to all our amazing employees. I'm always struck by the longevity of so many of our employees, and that's great to see. So, thank you.
Yes, thank you, and it definitely creeps up on you. If you need that photo of Kevin Fensel for anything, please let me know.
Could you email it out?
Yes, I will email it out, yes, and post it, yes.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, we have Council Liaison Reports. I will start with Councilmember Matthews. I don't have anything at this time, thank you. Councilmember Harris?
Nothing at this time.
Vice Mayor?
Couple of things to report. There was a Sustainability Commission meeting on Thursday. I attended online with the rest of the group in person upstairs. There was a water rate study update, something I'm pretty familiar with at this point, but it was great to hear Mr. Jones provide that information to this group and to get their particular set of questions addressed. It was a really nice conversation. And then there was a lengthy conversation about an equity assessment in the Neighborhood Sustainability Grant Program. So almost more than an hour spent talking about benefits, barriers, and action steps that go into what does equity mean when we're talking about the Neighborhood Sustainability Grant Program, and those action steps that are being taken in order to make the next round of grants more equitable. That's all I have to report there. I did want to mention that there was a Coquenino Plateau Water Advisory Council meeting on Friday morning. We always have those on the last Friday of the month. I'm the chair of that group, and we had a really nice presentation from Navajo Hydrologist Robert Kirk, who spoke to us about the water settlement that we're going to be discussing today. It was nice to hear, for the first time publicly, the perspective of not the City of Flagstaff, but other stakeholders in the group. And there was a report in the paper about that meeting on Friday in today's paper, so check that out. Thank you.
Councilmember McCarthy?
Thank you, Mayor. I, along with several other council members, did a tour of the John Wesley Powell Boulevard alignment, which will be a new major thoroughfare going from like the airport over east and then up to Forest Street. That was interesting. Later this week is the Bicycle Committee meeting, if anybody's interested in bicycle issues. I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Sweet?
Thank you, Mayor. I attended the NACOG meeting last week, and we adopted the budget. And surprise, surprise, the wage issue is alive and well in that organization, and we all know that all too well. And it was a good conversation, and we did increase what needed to be increased to get things leveled off for the compression that we're all facing, and it was a good adding to the meeting. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember House?
Thank you, Mayor. First, I apologize that I can't be there with you all in person. I am under the weather today, so I decided to stay home. But in terms of council liaison reports, this past week, the House and Commission had a robust discussion about the advancing of the Affordable Housing Incentives and Affordable Home Sales Programs with the city. A lot of good questions there. I was not able to attend the Commission on Diversity Awareness meeting, but I know City Manager was able to attend in my stead this weekend. I also was able to participate in events for the Back to Flagstaff event and read a proclamation on Sunday on behalf of the mayor, recognizing that organization and the work they're doing to preserve the history of several legacy families that have called Flagstaff home for many years. So it was an honor to be part of that celebration, and also through that, there was also through that, there was the announcement of a scholarship endowment through the Arizona State University in honor of Mr. Mel Hannah, who was the first Black city council member for Flagstaff. He was the first African American, excuse me, African American Board of Supervisors member, and a number of firsts in terms of advancing civic engagement within the community. So it was an honor to hear that announcement and looking forward to seeing that fund funded and advanced through Arizona State University, as well as ongoing conversations on ways that Mr. Hannah can be honored here in Flagstaff where much of his legacy existed. So that's it for me. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, and feel better soon. Next up, item seven, liquor license public hearings. We have one application. So I'm going to open the public hearing, and we will get our presentation.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I'm Colin C. with the Flagstaff Police Department of Deputy Chief Operations. Today, we have a new Series 12, which is a restaurant license for the Station Cafe, which is located at 1800 North Fort Valley Road. We weren't able to discover any type of issues with the applicant or the location on this license.
Thank you so much. Counsel, do you have any questions? And do we have any public comment?
No, Mayor.
All right. I am going to close the public hearing then. Counsel, if you have any thoughts, or I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I'd like to move that we forward this application to the state with a recommendation of approval.
Do I have a second? I'll second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Great. Thank you. Good job on your first presentation in terms of this to us. Next up, we have consent agenda. All matters under the consent agenda are considered by the city council to be routine. Unless a member of the city council expresses a desire at this meeting to remove an item from the consent agenda for discussion, the agenda will be enacted by one motion approving the recommendations listed on the agenda. Unless otherwise indicated, expenditures approved by council are budgeted items. So here we have consent agenda items A through M. Counsel, are there any items that you would like to pull to discuss separately? All right, seeing none, I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move that we approve the consent agenda, which is items eight A as in Aslan through eight M as in McCarthy.
Nice. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Great. All right, moving right along. Down to nine, routine items, nine A. Consideration and adoption of ordinance number 2024-17. We've had the presentation about this. It looks like we have public comment on this item. No, that's another item. Okay. Counsel, do you have any additional questions for staff? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion to read the ordinance.
Mayor, I move that we read ordinance 2024-17 by title only for the final time.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. An ordinance of the city council of the city of Flagstaff levying upon the assessed valuation of the property within the city of Flagstaff, Arizona, subject to taxation a certain sum upon each $100 of valuation sufficient to raise the amount estimated to be required in the annual budget, less the amount estimated to be received from other sources of revenue, providing funds for various bond redemptions for the purposes of paying interest upon bonded indebtedness and providing funds for general municipal expenses, all for the fiscal year ending the 30th day of June 2025.
Mayor, I move that we adopt ordinance 2024-17.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right.
Aye.
Oh, thank you, Councilmember Harris, I mean, House. And any opposed? All right. Item nine B, consideration and adoption of resolution number 2024-30 and ordinance number 2024-19. I believe that staff does not have, city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel, I want to start the discussion here and note a few things that have happened since the last meeting in the interest of getting everything on record. And I don't know that there's a formal presentation, but I do think staff has a few things to talk about. I just want to preface the discussion by noting that there remains some lingering discussion to explore any further reductions of these proposed rate increases. And this has indeed been the case since the last meeting. In a meeting that occurred internally this week, yesterday, we talked at length about a potential path forward that could help further reduce the rates, and wanted to put that on the table for possible consideration. Of course, counsel took action on this two weeks ago with a first reading, so everything I'm talking about here is entirely optional with the council. Specifically, the proposal for a further amendment that is now being discussed or presented to you is to further the downward adjustment of the execution rate of the capital projects. Counsel may recall, a couple of weeks ago, that rate was established at 86%. The idea now is to reduce it to 80%, all of that from the original 100% rate. When the previous adjustment from 100% to 86% on that execution rate was considered, I will remind, remind the council that it would, pardon me, that it equated with about a 5% decrease, both with water and wastewater. This additional adjustment that is now being considered or proposed would probably lower that by an additional 1.5%. That's per annum, so over time, it does have, it could, you know, be impactful, even though it seems like on a year-by-year basis, it does not equate to a large sum. In discussing this possible scenario with staff this morning, and Mayor, with you, just to see if there was a desire to move forward, we made mention that we don't have all the numbers crunched yet on this, although we do have some numbers to discuss, the 1.5% that I've already made reference to. But if there is a desire by council, we do have a placeholder to have a special meeting for tomorrow. We have met the 24-hour requirement on posting that. Thank you, Ms. Salzberg. That's all assuming that there's a desire to entertain that discussion. But we want to make sure that if there is, we are able to provide council with, with good numbers, accurate numbers. So that is what would occur tomorrow. So again, to summarize, the idea of lowering that execution rate on the capital projects from 86% to 80% would be presented to you tomorrow with, with all the relevant numbers to discuss, including, for example, how it would impact billings and so forth. We do not have all that detailed information for you today. Our consultant, Stan Tech, has been working on this. We gave them the go-ahead this morning to do that, and we are thankful for their willingness to give this a lot of priority. But again, all of this is predicated upon council's decision today. So we'd like to present you with that as a possible talking point today, and, and, you know, seek your direction on whether you would want to see this additional amendment come your way through a special meeting tomorrow. I want to apologize for, you know, some last minute change-up here, but I want to emphasize that we at the staff level are doing what we can to diligently pursue what we're hearing from some council is a desire to explore every and all means to lower these rates in a way that we think is manageable and will still afford us the opportunity to do all the things that the rate increases have been slated to accomplish. So I don't want to go any further with this. I think staff is here to help discuss this with you, and should there be a desire, we have a little bit of information we can roll out for your review. Mayor and council, do you have any questions of me, just as a starting point to this discussion?
I would like to hold off on any discussion on council's part until we take public comment. But before, I'd like to see whether staff has anything to add to that. And I see that they do not. So I'm going to take public comment, and then we will have comments and questions and discussion from council members. First up, Stephen Poor.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Steve Poor from 1640 West of Onaway, also a writing candidate for council in 2024. And this has been something, this particular topic, I've been very vocal on. And I want to emphasize something today, that basic forecasting, you are going down a road that would not fly anywhere else in the world that I'm aware of. In particular, if you want to forecast nine years, and you've got 10, or 13, or 14 years of data, you don't cherry pick four years of an abnormal year, of the pandemic, of the Federal Reserve increasing money supply 400% when they normally do it 2%, unleashing inflation, and thinking that's normal times going forward, when the Federal Reserve is in year two of reducing the money supply and returning things to normal. So in particular, what was used to come up with your, your cost escalators, which you don't need at this point, is 6%. You looked at a particular St. Louis Fed, which is fine, cost index related to the materials used by the water, fine. But instead of that rationale and using that short term of 20 to 23, if you go back nine years, it's funny, the annual return, that is the annual increase in that index, is negative 1.7%. If you use 2.4, that your expert treasurer and CPA said is long-term inflation, you got a 4% buffer. What are you worried about? I'm sure they can manage inside 4% buffer. The other indexes that they used were 0.3%. Not four, not three and a half. Again, plenty of buffer at 2.4. The other index was 1.24 over the long term, not using the short-term periods, okay? Again, you got 100% buffer. I'm sure they can manage within that 100% buffer. If a first-year student in college presented this, they'd get a dandy from their professor. That's a D. They wouldn't get it past them. This doesn't pass the smell test. It would not pass for any expertise. And if you present a significant problem, I'm pointing out to you, you can have 100% of your projects, but use the longer-term numbers, or use just inflation from your finance experts, the treasurer, your CPA. 100% of your projects. Inflation is not going to be there. If it does, you can always adjust it. Thank you.
Thank you. Regina Salas?
Hello, Mayor and Council. I speak at this moment on behalf of the Northern Arizona Lodging Tourism and Restaurant Association, and as, and as an advocate for our city's economic prosperity and the well-being of its residents. Aware that none of you is a business owner who owns the commercial property in which you operate your business and employs more than five full-time employees with benefits. Aware that most of you have already decided on voting yes on the proposed rates, water rates, and speaking now may fall on deaf ears. I still hope that these walls have ears, appealing to your conscience and your sense of duty and sense of fiscal responsibility. Tourism is the fastest-growing sector in Coquenino County with 9,000 new jobs by 2030. Our tourism industry is a vibrant ecosystem that sustains over 8,000 jobs and injects $565 million into our local economy. Every restaurant, hotel, bar, and cafe contribute to the tapestry of our city, creating opportunities for countless families to thrive. Last year, our tourism dollars brought in $12.1 million in bedboard and beverage sales tax to fund the city's programs, PROS, beautification, arts and science, economic development, and Discover Flagstaff. Now, imagine the ripple effect of imposing higher water rates on our businesses. We already operate on razor-thin margins, and increase, increase in operational costs directly threatens our viability. It's not just about profits. It's about the livelihoods of our fellow citizens who rely on these jobs to put food on their tables and roast over their heads. While we recognize the critical needs for funding water infrastructure, we believe that burning businesses and residents with higher fees is not the solution. I urge council to vote nay on the water rate increases and explore alternative methods of funding water infrastructure. It is imperative that we prioritize fiscal responsibility and seek solutions that do not immensely impact businesses and residents. I ask council to go back to the drawing board and work on a sustainable future for our city by finding innovative ways to fund water infrastructure that does not pass the burden of cost to residents and businesses. It can be done, and it will require political will and dogged fiscal responsibility. Thank you.
Thank you. Paul Byer? Paul is not in the audience. Doesn't look like it. All right, we have online commenters.
Mayor and council, our first commenter tonight is going to be Leah Mundell. Leah, you can go ahead and unmute yourself and give your comment.
Hi, thanks very much. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Thanks so much. My name is Leah Mundell, 2226 North Lantern Lane, and co-chair of Northern Arizona Institutions for Community Leadership, part of NAIC. I just wanted to simply state my concern about the impact these increases would have on low and middle income families, the families that we work most closely with as an organization. I know this is something that you're thinking about as well, but want to just put out there that as we go forward with such increases, that we are thinking clearly about mitigation for our most vulnerable families. And so NAIC would really like to work with you to think about mechanisms that we can put in place that would be supporting those families moving forward. That's all for today. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there additional online commenters?
Yes, we have one more, and it's going to be Anthony Garcia. Anthony, you may go ahead and address Mayor and Council.
Hello, Mayor and Council. My name is Anthony Garcia, 2212 North Center Street, Sunnyside. I've been following the water rate study for quite Sunnyside. I've been following the water rate study for quite some time now, and I wanted to add an alternative perspective. This is a perspective that kind of offers that the folks that you are proposing that you're helping by upchanging the rate that they pay might actually be hurt in the long term. You see, to the normal minimum water user, you're only, you know, the impact is still significant. I live paycheck to paycheck. I understand how relevant this impact is. But saving a few dollars a month while we're going to use a credit card or take on debt is going to only save the folks, you know, the business, the large business owners, it's going to save them the most amount of money. It's not even really going to save those who you're trying to help save a few bucks for our water infrastructure. We take the 10%, it goes always, but saving $10 a month on your bill as opposed to somebody who, you know, uses a whole heck of a lot of water, tens of thousands of dollars over a year, could really help our water infrastructure while saving the burden of the taxpayers to have to repay that debt in perpetuity, or maybe not perpetuity, but definitely with the time value of money and interest. I haven't actually seen the consideration for how that works out and how cost-effective that part is by taking on this debt. In order for us to have the water that we need, we need to be willing to pay for it. And somebody who does live paycheck to paycheck, myself, I'm willing to contribute that extra $10 a month to get this funded at 100%. So that way, my grandchildren aren't having to pay back the debt that is being accrued just to save, really, the biggest business owners the most amount of money and leaving them off the hook to not have to pay, really, their fair share when it comes to water improvements. We talked about hydrologists earlier. We haven't seen sustainable recharge to the aquifer in 30 years. Our aquifers are going down. It would help, one form of conservation is to hold people accountable by forcing them to, not forcing them to pay the right amount, but giving them the opportunity to pay for good-quality water. Lastly, well, I don't have time for it, but we do have a moratorium with Williams we should talk about.
Thank you. Are there any additional comments? Not online, mayor. And Paul Byer is still not here? Okay. Well, we have a council member who's ready to make a potential motion, and then we also have council members who would like to comment. So let me take some comments first and see where we're all leaning. So I'm going to start with Councilmember Matthews.
Thank you, mayor. This has been a really educational process. It's frustrating that we're here right now with the final reading potentially tonight. I look back on this process, and we spent the first several months talking about the needs, and I think we all agree that we want and need infrastructure improvements. When the numbers started coming out, then the sticker shock hit. I still feel that there's a lot of community members that still haven't jumped on the train. They don't know yet. But I talked to a lot of business owners and a lot of large families that have multi-generations living in their household, and this is very scary for them. A couple months ago, we asked the consultants to have a special work session where we could throw out numbers. We were assured that they would have the software, and we could say, well, what about this? Because we might think that this is a big change, and then the end result is not very significant, and so that's a waste of time. What ended up happening that day was another long presentation, and then we didn't get to do the scenarios that we were looking for. So that left us all really scrambling to figure out what can we change to make an impact. I sent out an email. I made mention of it because of open meeting laws. I wanted, I wish I could have just sat down and had another special session with the council, but we're not allowed to do that. So two other council members and I met with the water and city manager to talk about, you know, we didn't want this to go on. We want to resolve this and come to a conclusion. And one of the things that I mentioned yesterday was, what if we just say we want this increase in water, because it's not just to cover O and M, this is to cover capital improvement projects. When those increases over the next five years, it's been told to me verbally, even though it's still on the presentation, that there's not that 5% increase after the five years. But that increase that we're doing over the next five years is to cover capital improvement projects. So we're going to have over an abundance of inflows coming in beyond O and M. I know that restaurants use a lot of water. I had 40 years in banking, commercial lending. Restaurants have a 90% failure rate. And so I can just imagine, I was a business consultant for many years after my banking career, that probably in year three or four, we're going to start seeing some doors close. And we're going to see people in those businesses up until that day, because they're going to be, you know, scrambling to cover the increases in minimum wage, inflation. Stormwater hasn't really hit yet. We approved that last year, and now this. And I don't feel comfortable with what we see their water rate bills are going to be. And so I know this is last-minute, and we discussed how, okay, what are the consequences? We're going to have to pay our consultants extra money to do this revision if it's approved. I see five or six change orders on this one agenda, and this water rate discussion and decision tonight impacts our whole community. All these other change orders that are for another $100,000, another $150,000, all of those just go by the, you know, fly-by-night, and we're like, yeah, sure, we need it. And then we might be pushing back on, well, this might cost us $10,000 or $20,000 more dollars. My opinion is, it's worth it because we have an obligation to our community to, yes, we need to provide, water is a basic life service that we need to foster and take care of. Our conversation at our meeting yesterday discussed, these big projects aren't going to be done in five years. Some of these large projects will be in phases over 10, 15 years. So we don't, there's to gather that money. So even though this is unprecedented, that we're on the final, final decision, I, my stomach is sick to think that we're going to approve this tonight because it is still too high. It's still going to be too devastating for our community. Yes, we've put some over on debt, and I know that makes our treasurer nervous, but we have a great coverage ratio. We're solid. It's not going to affect us. I really plead to my fellow council members that we owe it to our community to see how this impacts. 1.5% doesn't look like a lot, but it's millions of millions of dollars. And I asked Shannon Jones yesterday, we talked about smooth ketchup, which was presented in October, and that was a reasonable option that was given to us last October. And even though it's not quite the same, it's a little different. He said the impact was about the same, and that's over $100, $150 per month on the average commercial user, and that's not including our hotels or restaurants that have a higher use. We can encourage water conservation, but these businesses that are going to be the more significantly impacted are already doing a lot to water conservation. You can't stop washing dishes if you're a restaurant. You can't serve dirty plates. You've got to take showers and stuff, so that's not an option. So I'm hoping that even though this is kind of coming in blindsided to some because we couldn't just have a group meeting, I hope at least our fellow council members will agree to have one more meeting tomorrow and see where we're at. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Councilmember Sweet, did you want to make a comment separate from your motion?
Sure, I can do that. Thank you. I do have a motion, but I will save it. First, I want to request T-shirts for all of us up here saying, "I survived the water rate study of 2024." Okay, but in all seriousness, I do want to first thank staff and our city leadership and council and community members. We're here at this final read, and these conversations have not been easy. Nothing keeps me up at night more than knowing that our decisions up here will affect our community. And I keep thinking about this rate increase as proposed, and I wonder if my neighbor may not be able to feed her family if we don't do this right, or if my fellow small-business owners will end up closing because of all of the increases that keep happening. There is a balance that I've been trying to strike. I see the importance of funding our water infrastructure and absolutely understand that water is life, but I also see our community teetering paycheck to paycheck, working hard to make it in this town. I was elected to look at all of these factors, and believe me when I say I have. I value our water. I value the need for upgrades to our infrastructure, and I certainly value all of those who live in our community. After talking with staff yet again, I'm not convinced that we will be able to keep up with the 86% CIP execution rate that is proposed. My last council direction was to go to 80% and get as close to that as we can, and we're not quite there yet. So tonight, I am asking for that. I realize we're in the final hour, and this isn't easy, and we may need to come back tomorrow, but I personally feel like it's well worth it. I believe that our community is worth it, and I believe it's prudent that we take one last look at our decision and do this final modification. So I will make the motion when appropriate, and mayor, I'll let you tell me when.
Thank you.
Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
Actually, because we're talking about something that is a possible variation from what was unanimously approved for a first read on June 18th, I want to just explain a little bit procedurally about that when you have an opportunity to let me do that.
Go ahead and do that. It may inform some of the additional comments.
Thank you. I appreciate it. So ordinances, when they're adopted, are typically short. I'll use the ordinance you just barely adopted as a perfect example. With respect to the levy, it's less than two pages long. And when that's the case, the ordinance can simply be read and then adopted. That said, sometimes ordinances get rather lengthy. When you're changing water rates and there's a lot of information about that, that's a perfect example. That's what we have here, and it's called adoption by reference. You basically adopt a public record that everybody in the community can come see, and you point to that with your ordinance, saying, that's what we want to adopt. We're referring to that. That's why it's called adoption by reference. So what you have here tonight is what you read the first time for a possible adoption by reference. And if there's any change to that, then technical changes would require number crunching, time, what are the rates? You have to have final numbers in that document you're pointing to to say, we want to adopt that. So you wouldn't have time tonight, and knowing that, coming forward here, that's why, as the city manager mentioned, there's a placeholder meeting, a special meeting set for tomorrow, which would give staff and the consultant time to re-crunch those numbers and at least come up with the rates, what those rates would be. That said, if council is interesting and interested in having that discussion, rather than just doing a second read as you did the first read with what's in there, then you would need to make a motion to postpone to tomorrow until 3:30. I know there are other comments, but procedurally, that's the cleanest, simplest path forward, is just a motion to postpone to tomorrow's special meeting.
So are you saying that you would prefer that we reserve comments until after that motion?
No, you can still make the comments, all that you would like. I just think when a motion is made, if it's a motion to consider this, if you want to find out if a majority of council wants to consider something different than what you did at the first read, then I highly recommend, strongly recommend, you postpone to tomorrow to allow staff and the consultant time to get those numbers to you. So you have a final document as close as possible to point to, to refer to, to adopt.
Thank you. I'd like to amend your T-shirt suggestion to read that we survived the 2023 slash 2024 water rate study. Go for it. Okay, we have Councilmember McCarthy, then Councilmember House, then Councilmember Harris, and then Vice Mayor.
Well, mayor, I'd just like to point out first that I do have a cup that I got when I was in planning and zoning that says, "I survived the zoning code change of 11, 11, 11," November 11, 2011. I'm trying to decide if this is reasonable, if this makes sense. So I do have a few comments. We've had a lot of comments about interest rates. Now, I'm no economist, but I will tell you that I've been reading this thing called the Kiplinger Letter since I was in high school, which for me was a long time ago. And I have a lot of respect for that. It's privately circulated for businesspeople. And I don't remember exactly, but they're talking about interest rates in the near future of something in the order of 3% or 4%. Shannon Jones, could you come up, ask you a couple of questions? So it seems that the focus of this suggestion is that we assume for the sake of calculations that we'll, instead of getting 86% of the projects that we need done, we'll get 80% of them done. Now, we've spent many, many months talking about how we need these projects. I mean, if you had the money, would you be able to get these projects done, the ones that are on the list, which we've seen before? Go ahead.
Mayor, Councilmember McCarthy, so definitely on the CIP, we continue to work through, it's more dynamic than the funding, but funding is a big portion of that. And so currently within our program CIP for the 10 years, right, I think it's upward of close to $400 million across the enterprise funds. That being said, the financial portion means we need to collect almost $400 million during that duration to solve the funding issue. Anything less than that, what I would say, it probably extends the time, because you need more time to achieve that threshold of the funding. Definitely with the projects, I know we've been, before you've given up updates on construction schedules, weather, priorities, those things pivot. So we know it's more dynamic than just the funding, but that is what the discussion is today. And so, but that is a factor that we do have to cover. The funding has to be in place in order to do the projects. If it takes more time to accumulate that funding through various sources that we do, that is still our commitment, and we continue to work to make sure those projects are delivered.
Okay, I realize that there's many factors, you know, materials, scheduling, engineering, drawings, blah, blah, blah. But it sounds like that if we did reduce this 86 down to 80, that that could impact the, when these projects get completed. And tell me if I'm wrong.
Councilmember McCarthy, no, I would agree with that. I think the timing, again, not the project will be cut, would just be the timing would probably would be affected.
Okay. Right now, we process our reclaimed water to A+, which does not take into account chemicals of emerging concern, which have been shown scientifically to have some danger. I refer to Professor Propper's work that did research on this. So included in your list of projects, is there anything that will address increasing our reclaimed water from A+ to something that would really be potable?
Councilmember McCarthy, that type of, that type of research and technology, I would say is programmed within the 10-year plan.
I'm sorry, you said it is?
Yes, it is.
I appreciate that. It seems like we've... It seems like we've, the problem we have now is that we have delayed a lot of projects. That's why there's so much to do right now. And I guess I just am concerned that we're just doing that again. So that's not a question, it's a comment. Let's see, my last point here. Some people are talking about, and that's my last question for you, thank you. Some people are saying, "Well, we shouldn't put this on the ratepayers. We should find some other source of money." Well, what other source of money is there? Taxes? Well, that still goes on the same people. We've had this idea that the water fund should be treated as a enterprise fund. So I don't know if we want to get away from that and find some other source of money. When people say bond it, well, it still has to be paid for. And do we do that with water fees? Or do we make a major change and say, "No, we'll pay for it by property tax," or something, or sales tax? It still has to be paid. That's my comments and questions for now. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember House.
Thank you, Mayor. And I will be briefed by necessity. I want to make a comment to some of the comments that we've received about political will, because I think going back to what something that Councilmember McCarthy just said, one of the points of political will that I think we need to keep into consideration is how long we're willing to put off some of these needs that our community has faced for years that have been on hold because of a lack of political will to move beyond some of that These are not easy conversations, and it's not easy to be thinking about increasing these rates. This is something that impacts our entire community in different ways. I'm a member of the community who also lives paycheck to paycheck regardless of how much I make, because this is an expensive community to live in. I am a renter who faces what these charges may mean to my future rental rate increases. I am a worker who, who works more than 40 to 60 hours a week to make ends meet for different reasons. So these are not things that I think completely bypass my, my thinking when we're talking about these rates. But the question that always comes to my mind is, again, and I brought this up when we were talking about the housing bond measures, I brought this up when we've talked about carbon neutrality and all of the different issues that we face, and it's that question of if not now, when, and if not us, then who? I, I think the longer that we are willing to press pause on these community needs, the increased burden that we're placing on the future generations that want to call Flagstaff home. This is not saying that we want the present community to be overburdened by the rates that we're looking at or the, the things that we're looking at, but because we haven't been willing to make these difficult decisions in the past, we're faced now with making an increasingly difficult decision today. I am willing, if it's the will of council and, and the majority of council, to continue this conversation to tomorrow, then I'm willing to continue this conversation to tomorrow. But I, I just wonder, how many tomorrows do we have to keep moving this conversation down the road and to keep holding off on making the tough decisions that are going to impact this community, not just today, not just tomorrow, but for years to come? I know that that's a question that all of us are asking and are wanting to have answered, but I, I think it's important for us not to keep working in the realm of what's comfortable and what's easy, but looking at what's hard and what's right. And so I encourage us to keep that question in mind as well as we move forward with this conversation. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember House. Vice Mayor.
I believe you had Councilmember Harris ahead of me in your earlier statement. I'm willing to wait if you wanted to speak first.
Okay. Go, go ahead, Councilmember Harris.
Okay. I too will try and be as brief as possible. Most of you probably have heard me say lots and lots of times up here that, from up here, that we have so many resources in this community, and we know that there are folks out there who are very successful at running businesses in this community. They know what they're doing. They've been doing this for 20, 30 years, and they're good at it. And so the only thing that I want to say is that when we're facing issues like this, we need all of you to come to the table with us. This is the last, we're, we're at a last-minute thing, and we have to do this. I get that. And I'm all for infrastructure in terms of water. I know it has to happen. I want it to happen, but I'm also very, very concerned about the people who are living not just paycheck to paycheck, they're living day to day. They don't know if they're going to have a roof over their head tomorrow. Those are the folks that I'm worried about. And so I think that one of the things that we have to do is we really do have to think about this as our community and our problem. It's not just the city's problem, and it's not just the seven of us who sit up here every Tuesday, or whenever we meet Tuesdays, to deal with the, with, with all of these issues. They're complex, and we know that we've put this off for a while. And so if we decide to put this off and discuss it tomorrow, it's not because we're not being courageous, because I don't think anybody can say that we're not making courageous decisions, because we do that. But we also know that we have got to think about those folks who we're going to be dealing with in another area, because now we're going to have to find housing for them. Now we're going to have to find more food for them. Now we're going to have to do something else. Those are the folks that we have to think about when we're doing these, making these changes and doing these rates. And so I'm all for us waiting until tomorrow and having a bigger discussion and seeing what else we can do to make this happen. And so whatever that might look like, I'm all for it, but we really do need to move forward in some way, and Attorney Sterling made an amazing suggestion, and I concur. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor.
Thank you so much, Madam Mayor. I really appreciate your questions, Councilmember McCarthy, and I really appreciate the comments that you made, as well as Councilmember House. You know, I really do appreciate the instinct to turn over every possible rock, even and maybe especially at the last minute. But I do think, I do feel that we had a very thought-out discussion and vote on this very recently, and my position hasn't changed at all. Flagstaff, City Council immediately revisited a vote last year, and it resulted in a complete mess, and no one was happy with how that went. So I feel it's a bad precedent, and I'm concerned about this 11th-hour twist, and I don't think we should reopen this. My reasons for supporting the rates we unanimously agreed to in June are greater in resolution for me than the narrower concerns being expressed, as authentic and accurate as those concerns are. So for me, this is a bigger conversation, and I, I'm not convinced that the, the equation has changed at all. The equation in a broader terminology, not in a numbers sense. I'm really not interested in further nickel-and-diming the mission and mandate of water services downward. There's, there seems to me that there's a severe diminishing return here, and in my view, I see a very small savings for a significant jump in unfunded need. There's a focus on the costs to ratepayers, but as I've said before, there's also a cost to not doing the difficult necessary things. And I do feel that keeps getting lost, and I just want to raise it again, because I think it needs to be said. We have needs identified at 100%. By definition, those are all the needs that we have. We've already compromised downward by agreeing to punt on 15% of our infrastructure requirements. What I've said before is that it will never be cheaper than today for us to do the job we need to do, and we owe it to our community to stop kicking this can down the road and creating deferred maintenance problems and compromising our modernization needs. I think we should pass a second read of what we already agreed to unanimously a couple weeks ago. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Matthew.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to clarify a few things that were said. Our conversation yesterday was about reducing the capital execution rate. We were also told, I asked City Manager directly, is it feasible with our workforce shortage that continues on and off, our management for capital improvements shortages, although I know we just filled our last spot, to all, do all these projects in five years? And City Manager, what was your response? So I don't mess it up.
I believe my response to doing the list of projects in, in five years is that I personally would not want to make that commitment. I have, but I also want to clarify, even though it's a five-year rate implementation, it, it is a 10-year project completion plan, but I don't know that my answer would even change in a 10-year scenario. And if I may briefly explain that, because I don't want to derail the conversation. I do look at all the projects in their entirety that the city currently has, projects, most of which have been funded. And the delivery of those projects on time and on budget is becoming more and more challenging. And this council and the council prior have, have seen a multitude of examples of, of that. I think we do what we can, but in a climate where costs are rapidly increasing, inflation is, is a factor. And more recently, the scarcity of resources to do the projects, contract work, so forth, i- it's hard, and it's not hard to even procure the, the services. We find ourselves looking at existing contracts, statewide contracts to hop onto, going out to, to bid, that does not solve the problem for us in, in many instances. We have to have a creative approach to utilize resources that, that are there, but it's, these are challenging times. It's, it's not to suggest it's, it's going to continue, but, but right now, it's, it's hard to, to make that delivery on time and on budget.
Thank you, City Manager. So, and, and in our conversation yesterday, there are projects that today we already knew are going to take 10, 15 years. So my point is that I, I want to make sure that council remembers that this proposed rate increase or the adjustment to it is intentionally to not just cover operations and maintenance, it's to do capital improvement projects. So when the final five years is up and we've increased it by whatever percent, that rate will continue on in perpetuity. Going over what we need to operate, and it's going to build our capital reserves, which one of my favorite projects is JW Pal extension, that it's on its 23rd year. You know, we, it, it takes a long time to get these done, and to think that we, well, we need all this money and we need to do this full increase to get all these projects done in five years because we can't kick it down the road in time is not realistic. We're not going to get these done in five years. We're going to have this revenue continue on over and above what we need for operations and maintenance, and we will have the money to fund. It is going to cost us more in five years and in 10 years, because even if we approve the initial full-funded, full CIP, we would still run short of what's projected today because costs are going to escalate. So we owe it to our community to just take a pause. I, I, I don't think last minute, 11th hour is wrong. I think that's what we were elected to do, to not rush in and be pressured by saying, "Well, we're in our final approval. We just, we need to go on break tomorrow, so let's just do it." No, we owe it to our community to exhaust it. I wish we would have had the opportunity to throw in actual scenarios and see the end result. Probably we won't get the fuller result that I want, and I think our community needs, but 1.5% is, I think I looked at it in the tens of millions of dollars over time. So it is significant. But we'll still be, we'll still be getting after five years that full CIP and O&amp;M rate increase, and we can continue to fund those CIP projects when we can actually get them done. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. City Manager, did you have something additional that you wanted to say?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Thank you for a thoughtful discussion. I just wanted to mention something that I failed to mention at the very beginning of this item, which is the reason for a special meeting tomorrow, if there is a desire by council, and, and we're not making that assumption, but if there is a desire, is to enable us to stay on track with the timeline to have an implementation date, date of September 1st. Obviously, we are on the brink of council recess. If we were to put this off until the end of August, many things change. That timeline changes. Tomorrow's special meeting enables us to stay with the timeline. I'm sorry I didn't mention that earlier.
Thank you. Some really well-stated comments, Council, and I appreciate, I, I know I've said this before, but I appreciate the amount of time that everyone has invested into coming up with the best solution for our community. And this has always been us working to balance the cost to our ratepayers with our duties as stewards of our water resources and needs for maintenance and infrastructure replacement. So this has never been a matter of, staff has just come up with some projects that we thought we'd do, so we're going to raise some rates, and we're sorry that it's going to be impactful to you. These are projects that have been identified, have been vetted, we have discussed them repeatedly. These are projects that we have to do. And we are, to, to those who haven't been involved in the conversations before, we are looking at bonds, we are looking at grants, we are looking at all methods of funding. Even with all of that, that's already been thought in, in all of these projects. We still need to raise the rates. So I appreciate that staff has, you know, you've gone over the inflation figures with us over and over again. Thank you very much for that. You've gone over the population growth numbers with us over and over again, and we appreciate that. We appreciate that you've been so willing to, to hear our concerns and to make adjustments as necessary. I too wish that we could have had more discussion upfront, because this does, you know, you get to the end and it does feel a little rushed. However, we're nearly there, and what we're talking about, if we do decide to hold it over until tomorrow, which I'm open to that at this point, I am, I'm open to hearing what the financial impact is when you take the execution rate down from 86 to 80. I, I appreciate staff letting us, I appreciate staff being clear about the process and the, the timelines and the projects that you can get done within a certain amount of time, and, and so I'm open to hearing what these new figures are. And that's what the whole meeting tomorrow would be for, is to hear what the financial impact is of impact is of going from 86 percent to 80 percent of an execution rate. Excuse me. So I'm hearing that there's some openness to doing that, but before we entertain a motion, our public commenter from earlier who wasn't here is here now. Is that correct? So Paul Byer is here, and I will take your comment.
Thank you and apologies for... Okay. My name is Paul Byer. I'm speaking on behalf of Friends of the Rio de Flag. First, I want to thank the city for working with us last year to create the new stream steward program that Nicole Antonopoulos talked about with you last week. I'm here today to talk about the smallest of the proposed projects for the water rate increases, namely the inner basin waterline restoration. The inner basin is the core, of course, of Arizona's biggest volcano. When the top of that volcano blew away, it left the Ring of Mountains that we now call the San Francisco Peaks or the Kachina Peaks, which we all love. The inner basin is the inside of that old volcano. The inner basin springs and wells have supplied 0 percent to 3 percent of Flagstaff's freshwater in each of the last 30 years. Water from the inner basin comes through us through a pipeline about seven miles long that's starting to fall apart. And, but before you tax us to replace that pipeline that supplies 2 percent of our water, please think about it. A two-mile strip of non-wilderness runs from the center of that wilderness area to Lock at Meadow. This two-mile dagger of non-wilderness is entirely due to our pipelines that take that water from the inner basin. Freeing the inner basin springs from that pipeline would create a wilder and wetter Kachina Peaks wilderness. Coconino National Forest staff would love to talk to us about the possibilities. I don't claim to know what they are. So move forward, please, with all the funding for all the other water projects as soon as you need to. But before you approve that inner basin pipeline, gather some more information, plan the best use, talk with other people, and perhaps you'll decide to retain the inner basin wells. And I certainly hope, but even if you retain some of the wells, I hope you will free all of the springs and enlarge our best local wilderness. Think hard before you tax us to keep the Kachina Peaks wilderness dewatered. If you decide to take a walk-in tour, I'd love to join you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Sterling.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Council, just from a procedural perspective, if there is a motion made to postpone to tomorrow and that passes, obviously, we're done for tonight. If there, if it fails, then a motion could still be made to pass or to do the second read as originally planned tonight. Likewise, when we get to tomorrow, if, after discussion of an amendment, if there is a tomorrow, if no amendment passes, then you could still do the second read as originally posted. I just want to make sure everybody knows your options are completely open if you do that. Thanks.
Councilmember. Go ahead.
Attorney Sterling, do we have to, if we, do we have to postpone this before we make the motion to go to tomorrow?
Amen. Yeah, I would, my recommendation is to at least consider and vote on a potential postponement before you talk about what those amendments are, because tonight, you just simply can't do a read without anything to refer to for your amended resolution.
Okay. Thank you. All right, so we're ready for your motion.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Council, for entertaining, moving this final read to tomorrow. I think it is very important that we see the impacts from the 86 to 80 percent. And who knows what that final vote will be, even on my end, but I would like to see those numbers, and I think we owe it to the community. So with that, Mayor and Council, I would like to make a motion to postpone the final read until 3:30 tomorrow.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Councilmember House, did I hear you second as well?
Yes, I was seconding.
Okay, so we've got fourths, and, yes, discussion.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank councilmembers in house and Aslan for their excellent comments. I want to have the political will to do the right thing. And the reality is that if we don't, the reality is if we reduce the amount of projects we're going to do from 86 to 80 percent, the reality is that we will be delaying needed projects. And I'll also say that if three, four, or five years from now, we've collected too much money, the council at that time can certainly reduce the rates and adjust it. So this isn't like it's casting concrete forever. It could be changed one year from now. So because of that, I'm going to vote no on this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. And just to clarify, we're talking about the execution rate within the years provided of the study. We're not talking about that projects fall off and we don't do them. Okay.
Councilmember House also had another comment, but I think I hear staff behind me wanting to clarify.
Yes, would staff step up and clarify?
Mayor, in response to the question, no, the projects would not fall off of the list. They would just continue to move and defer until they're funded and can move forward.
Thank you. Councilmember House.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to, again, clarify my reasoning for seconding. I know in the past, we've had conversations about moving conversations forward and hearing these different options, and in the past, I did not make a second on motions like that, but I want to remain open to hearing these different options regardless of how I am thinking that I may vote. With that continued conversation, I am at least open to hearing the full proposal. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Well said. I would, I would second that. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any additional comments, discussion? All right, all those in favor? Aye.
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 Opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
All right, so we will have a meeting tomorrow at 3:30. All right, moving down to C, consideration and adoption of ordinance number 2024-18. Staff, did you have anything additional to add?
Good afternoon. Bryce Doty, real estate manager. No new, no new information to add. I'm happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Council, do you have any additional questions from our previous conversation? All right, I will entertain a motion to read the ordinance by title for the final time.
Mayor, I'd like to move to read ordinance number 2024-18 by title only for the final time.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, city clerk?
An ordinance of the city council of the city of Flagstaff authorizing the exchange of real property of substantially equal value with property owners Gary G. and Mary Eileen Hundel, providing for severability, authority for clerical corrections, and establishing an effective date.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, that carries. Thank you very much.
Mayor, I believe there's one more action on it, is to approve that purchase agreement.
Oh, approve the purchase agreement. My apologies, and authorize the city manager to execute.
Mayor, I'll move to approve the purchase agreement and authorize the city manager to execute the necessary documents.
Thank you.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. Thank you, Mr. Doty. Consideration and adoption of resolution number 2024-32 and ordinance number 2024-20. Hello.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. Staff has no additional information for this item as well.
All right. Any questions for staff, Council? I will entertain a motion to adopt.
Mayor, I move to adopt resolution number 2024-32.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, and a motion to read?
Mayor, I move to read ordinance number 2024-20 by title only for the final time.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, city clerk?
An ordinance of the city council of the city of Flagstaff amending the Flagstaff City Code Title 12 Floodplanes, Chapter 12-01 Floodplane Regulations by adopting by reference that certain document entitled 2024 Revisions to Floodplane Regulations, providing for penalties, repeal of conflicting ordinances, severability, and establishing an effective date.
Thank you. And can I get a motion to adopt?
Mayor, I move that we adopt ordinance number 2024-20.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, we're moving down to E, consideration and approval of contract. Hello, new guy.
Awesome. Thank you. It's good to be here.
Good afternoon, Your Honor, members of council. I'm Trevor Henry, also known as The New Guy. Appreciate being here tonight or this afternoon, and we're going to go over amendment number two to the Spruce Wash suite of projects, the construction services agreement with Eagle Mountain Construction. And tonight, I'm here with the project team, so I will start off the presentation and kind of go over a few things related to what we've done so far, what the team has done so far, and then we will kind of get into the costs, go over the schedule, and then talk about the community involvements, and we'll just kind of go from there. So here is a map of what you've seen before for the suite of projects, and we have originally one through eight, which was part of Proposition 441, and those are listed there. You've seen those before. We've kind of covered those. And then we also added the Killip Inlet, and that is a project that's going to be funded through a reimbursement grant with the Army Corps of Engineers. And then we also have the Parkway Basins, which is a county flood district project, and it's funded by NRCS. Going on. So let's talk about what we've done already. So as part of the original contract, which was before you back in September, which was for GMP number one, that was work related to the underground portions of Grand View Drive as well as the clearing for the wedge. So that's represented in the orange here, and then also Grand View Drive. So that was GMP number one. And then just recently, March of this year, we were before you with amendment number one, which included GMP number two. And that work was related to the Grand View Drive, the roadway portion. That included doing the street itself with an inverted crown. It also included curb, which is a rolled curb, so existing was rolled, but now we put back a new rolled curb, a little taller, a little wider, to help with the conveyance of some of the stormwater. Also included in there was Linda Vista Crossing, which is a box culvert, which crosses Linda Vista Drive there. And also included in there were some improvements for the water and sewer, so we have to realign those mains to get around the new box culvert. And, let's see, and going, continuing on with Linda Vista from Cedar, it's a channel. Part of that GMP number two was the franchise utility work, so that was related to APS and to Unisource Energy Services. So there was work there that had to be done for their work, for their infrastructure, to get it out of the way of the new improvements. So that was part of the franchise. And then the wedge itself had some utility improvements related to storm drain, sewer, and water. So those kind of make up what amendment number one was, and that's currently under construction, and we're working through that. Also included are property acquisitions, and so we've always mentioned this item with anything we bring before you, because there might be some acquisitions that we might need to acquire, and most of them are related to temporary construction easements, and those are just allow the work to be done on private property until the work is done, and then those easements go away. And then related, there may be some acquisitions related to property that might need to be take, that need to take place related to property for right-of-way or for public utility easements. And that kind of covers what we've done so far. And then I will turn it over to Julie Lee, who is part of our project team, and she'll kind of continue the presentation. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Here we are, amendment two, guaranteed maximum price number three with the selected construction manager at risk, Eagle Mountain Construction. This is Linda Vista to Cedar Channel, and so this is the hardening of the channel between those two points. A portion of that channel is that articulated block, has a little cavity, it'd be some seeding, maybe we'll get a little bit of growth out of that articulated block section. And then the lower two-thirds or maybe three-quarters is a shot creek channel. From a budget standpoint, GMP three, so amendment two in front of you, is $2.9 million with the $50,000 owner contingency. So when you look at the already approved GMP one, GMP two, the total of that is $13,527,907.6. And that is approximately half of Proposition 441 budget. We have other funding sources, grant funding coming in because our costs are a little bit more than this, that we're tracking very regularly with finance, and we've had some great project partners that have been willing to contribute to add even more value to these projects. The construction duration holds. There is no request for extended construction duration. So that brings me to schedule. So if approved, this work does not start immediately, because this is work in the channel, and so we need to see how monsoons are going to play out and what's going to happen. We need to keep our crew safe, our people safe, working in that channel. So as soon as weather conditions allow, we want it to be in the position to say go. So in the meantime, they're getting ready, they're preparing for that work. Work that's underway already in the channel includes APS. They're done with moving their facilities. Optimum is done with moving their facilities. Lumen is on the heels, probably starting this week, and then Unisource will be starting fairly soon as well. So in 2024, we've got, been kind of tracking this, you've seen this slide before, but under construction, we have Grand View. We'll start on the Linda Vista Cedar Channel. If approved tonight, that'll start as soon as weather allows, so probably fall, carrying into the winter months. And then wedge utilities and storm drain. This is also, this was GMP two, and that work is, portions of it have started, but it's going to be starting in earnest next week. So speaking of schedule, we had a big week this week. This is really exciting. We paved out. Grand View is paved out as of today at 1 o'clock. So these pictures, I snuck these in, yes, we snuck these into the PowerPoint, just couldn't resist kind of showing you some before and after, and it's really quite remarkable to see that investment that our community has made, and here we are, a year so later, year and a half later, and this is what we're showing. It is, it is quite remarkable. All-new curb, gutter, driveway match-ins, asphalt, we have the inverted crown in the center of the street to convey that stormwater down the middle of the streets. The barriers are gone, the standbags are mostly gone. We're talking with residents about some of the... We're talking with residents about some of those interim conditions with sandbags until the whole suite of projects is complete, but it's really fantastic. All right. So as far as community involvement, we've got beta PR on the team, they're fantastic. We've got a call center. We have had these council meetings, community meetings, we do project notices. We have a Friday e-newsletter that goes out each week. We've got that website. And I already said the hotline, I know Ed and his team also field calls about sandbags. So we're really trying to make a big effort to give people as much information, keep them posted on the schedule and the changes. In fact, we've got door hangers going out. They probably went out yesterday, or maybe today, to let folks know of a slight shift in traffic control. We're handling that, and it's just going really well, really pleased. So with that, I'm happy to field any questions, and Trevor's here too, and the team.
Thank you. Are there any major traffic updates that we should know about? Or is it, is it just mostly on Grandview and them being able to access the road and?
Yes, Mayor, so we have a slight shift. Our closure right now is right there at the Spruce Wash Crossing on Linda Vista. Linda Vista is closed through that. We need to shift that closure over a little bit, so we need to shift that closure from the Wash Crossing itself to Grandview. So that means we need to adjust how folks on Paradise and Grandview enter and exit that neighborhood. So we have the newsletter that went out, we had the door hangers. We also had the mailings for people who may not live at their residence. So I think the word, the word is out.
Great, thank you. Counsel, do you have any questions? No questions? Thank you, so, so much. Okay, so we are looking to approve change order number nineteen and authorize the city manager to execute the necessary documents. Do we have a motion?
Mayor, I move that we approve item nine-E, actions one, two, and three.
Oh, I was, yes, yes, I was down one item. Thank you, council member. Okay, approve the second amendment to the C-Mar Construction Phase Services Agreement. Thank you for that motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, and a motion to, can we combine authorize the city manager with number two?
The council member McCarthy made the motion for all three items.
Oh, thank you. I was too busy scrolling on my agenda. Okay, great. So there we are. That's probably good, I think there's less chance for you rolling into the wrong area like I did. Okay, so just to let everyone know, we will take a break before the regular agenda. So we've got just a couple more, just a couple more items to get through before that. So, item F.
Your Honor, members of council, good afternoon again, Trevor Henry, Capitol Two Improvements Engineer. Tonight before you is consideration of change order number eighteen to the Rio de Flag Flood Control Project. We've always shown this slide before, and it just kind of gives an overview of what the project is. So we have Phase One, which is essentially below the railroad tracks, south of the railroad tracks. And then we have Phase Two, which is north. In this map, we do have completed items of the Rio, and they're on the very outside points of the phases. So we have the Butler Tunnel that's been completed, we have the Clay Avenue Wash Detention Basin, and we also have the Thorpe Bridge that was completed kind of in the north section. So this kind of gives an overview of what the 100-year floodplain is going, what it looks like. It's the clear version of the area. The clouded version is outside of that 100-year floodplain. And this just kind of gives a little bit of overview again of what the Rio de Flag Flood Control Project is. It's been in the works for quite a while, over 20 years. And we have the Army Corps of Engineers, who is the lead agency. The city is the non-federal agency. In 2004, we signed a cooperation, project cooperation agreement, which kind of defines the roles and responsibilities of each agency. Right now, we have engineers on the Army Corps side, led by Tetra Tech. And then we have, on the city side, our consultant, who is Ardua Shepherd-Wesnitzer. And we'll just refer to them as SWI as we go forward. Construction right now, through the Army Corps, they're kind of administering the contract and administering how this is going to play out. Right now, they're kind of giving us a ballpark estimate of this winter, having a contract, maybe a construction bid early, late fall, maybe September thereabouts, and then kind of working into potentially a contract by the end of the year, and then starting some construction next spring until 2030. So that construction duration is both Phase One and Phase Two. So the budget right now, we've been told, is 122 million. And that is, again, for both Phase One and Two. And the city's portion is 35%, and that kind of works out to just below 43 million. I did want to mention that there are LERDS, so that's L-E-R-R-D-S, and that's land easements, right-of-way, removals, and disposals. So that is a requirement that came out of the PCA. And that's just essentially stuff that the city has to do in order to make sure that this project is ready to go for the Army Corps. And so it's important that we remember LERDS, because that kind of defines a lot of the work that we're doing currently with our consultant, which then is a factor into why we're into change order number eighteen. So just, just remember that acronym. A little bit of history with Shepherd or SWI on what we've done with them. In 2005, we had the original contract, and that was a little over 1.5 million, and it was for 275 days. So back in 2005, we were really geared up to complete what we needed to in a little less than a year. And that original contract was based on two parts. The first part was on the Army Corps 30% plans. We needed to get everything coordinated, situated, and get ready for the 30% plans. We also had the, the second part, which was surveys, utility, relocation work, and right-of-way acquisitions. So that's all part of the preliminary work for the LERDS. And then in 2005 to 2009, we had some other council actions, but they didn't require us coming before you, because they were part of the city manager's change order authority and then staff's contract allowance authority. So we were able to do a lot of that work without having, just wanted to make you aware that from 2005 to 2009, we accomplished that. And then in 2009, we brought change order number four before you. And that was a significant change that was a result of a value engineering workshop with the Army Corps of Engineers. And that kind of really set the precedence for where we are now with the project itself. A lot of that work was related to changing the open channel conveyance, or the box structure, into an underground closed structure. So that was really big for that time. Change order number four was a little over a million, and it added some more contract days. And then we get into 2009 to 2020. And again, we did some more changes, which did not require council action, and that was through the city manager's change order authority and staff's contract allowance authority. So we were able to accomplish and keep the project moving forward. And then from March of 2020, and that should read April of 2023, we had change orders thirteen and seventeen with SWI. So that's five years, and then we had, I'm sorry, that's four years with five change orders. So we were before you probably every year, just re-upping what we have to do with SWI in order to meet what the Army Corps has asked us to do. And so what we have tonight before you is change order number eighteen. And this is additional work, again, that the Army Corps of Engineers has requested. And it's related to the master easement tracking document. So what the Army Corps has asked is just a better document to track what we're having to acquire for the project. And it's part of their certification. So it's just following an ask by the Army Corps of Engineers. We have additional legal descriptions. So as we work through the project and we find out areas that are still needed, we're able to work and create legal descriptions that are needed. We have utility compensability letters, so this is an actual form through the Army Corps of Engineers that has to get certified, and that's all part of the real estate. And then we have the BNSF Utility Accommodation Policy Services. So as the project is on north and south of the railroad, we have to either work through it or next to the railway, to BNSF's right-of-way. And so we have to go through a policy accommodation through BNSF, and that requires applications, requires exhibits, requires other types of documentation. And then we have the Army Corps' comment resolution. So we're working through the project, through the design. We have, we're currently in the agency technical review, which is maybe close to about a 95% level design. And we're just working through those comment resolutions and making sure everything is working together. We also have five points, the construction at Clay, Milton, and Butler. So this area, the box is going to go right through the intersection. So we have to work with ADOT to figure out how this is going to work with traffic. And then we also need to make sure that we get this facilitated through their permitting. So there is additional work there, which requires modifications to signals there, and also to just make sure the easements are working and are complete. And then we also have a quality control plan. So the Army Corps had mentioned to us that we need to certify our design with SWI. So that's just another step that we have to work with SWI to make sure we are certified and we meet the Army Corps' regulations. We also have wastewater updates, there's some sewer mains in five points that we have to make sure that we are doing correctly, the conveyance of that wastewater through this intersection, because we have to go up and down and under, up and over, and through, and just got to make sure that all kind of coordinates and, and is addressed by our project and meets the Army Corps' standards. And then lastly, it's just meetings and coordination. So we're just going to be going forward, talking with the Army Corps. We meet with them bi-weekly, and just to make sure everything is moving forward according to what has been placed and required and asked of us. And lastly, the, the actual change order number eighteen will be funded by the stormwater fee. And again, that was approved in 2018, and it started collection in 2019. So that fund will take care of change order number eighteen. So tonight, here before you, is change order number eighteen. We were before you, we were actually before the change order committee on June 13th, and they reviewed and approved the change order with a recommendation to come before you tonight for final approval. And if the staff's recommendation is to approve it to SWI in the amount of $214,480, we're adding 365 calendar days, just to make it concurrent with the project. And should a contract get released, we're able to do post-design services, we're able to have our consultant there, working with the contractor, should that kind of move forward. So that is presentation on change order number eighteen, and be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Harris has a comment.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say thank you for the update. I don't think some of the people in this room know how important the Rio project is to our community, and especially to some of those folks who live in the Southside neighborhood, who have not been able to access the equity in their homes for probably 60 years. And this is major for them. And so when we get this project done, I know that there will be a ton of people who are going to be forever grateful to the city that we had the political courage to move forward, even when some in our community did not want us to do that. So I appreciate it. Thank you very much to your team, to the Corps, and just keep moving forward. Thank you.
Your Honor, Councilmember Harris, thank you for the comment. I will pass that on to the team. There's been several project managers that have been part of this project for many decades, and I will pass that along.
Any questions or comments, council? I will entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion. I move to, let's see, we're in F. So approve change order number eighteen with Shepherd Whit snow, Whitzner Incorporated, the amount of $214,480, and a 365 calendar year time extension for the Rio de Flag Flood Control Utility Relocation Design Services Contract, and to authorize the city manager to execute the necessary documents.
Thank you. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Any opposed? All right. Moving down to G, consideration and approval of preliminary plat.
Sorry, I don't, I put this up, I have witnesses that have put this presentation up here, I apologize. All right, thank you for your patience. My name is Ben Mahia, I'm a planner with the City of Flagstaff. For your consideration, today, we have a preliminary plat request for a replat of lots 23 and 24, and tract E of the final plat for Coconino Ridge at Pine Canyon. The request is filed by Coconino Ridge at Pine Canyon LLC and TLC PC Land Investors LLC. Located, the, the site is located at 2460 and 2473 South Pinion J Drive. This is within the existing single-family subdivision with 31 single-family home lots on 19.2 acres in the single-family residential zone, also within the resource protection overlay zone. And once again, the plat is Coconino Ridge at Pine Canyon. Staff approved the preliminary plat of this replat on April 18th, 2024, with PZ Inc. Commission recommending approval by a five-zero vote on May 22nd, 2024. Just to give you some context, context of the location, the Coconino Ridge subdivision is bounded to the north by, across from, across JW Powell, Juniper Point, which is in the RR Zone, as well as the city-owned parcel, which is lovingly referred to as a shark bite in the MH Zone. And then by Deer Creek Crossing Unit One in the R1 Zone, which kind of wraps around the south and west of the subdivision. To the east is the undeveloped 126-acre parcel of formerly state trust land, which had originally been a 405-acre parcel in the RR Zone. And a little south of that is the National Forest in the PF Zone. In 2017, the Coconino Ridge at Pine Canyon plat was recorded as a 32-lot subdivision within the R1 Zone. Since the plat was recorded, one lot was combined with neighboring parcels to create a total of 31 lots in this subdivision. Tract E, which is highlighted in, in blue on the screen here, was reserved as private open- Tract E, which is highlighted in blue on the screen here, was reserved as private open space, public utility easement, and private drainage easement. And here is kind of a contrast of the proposed conditions with the existing conditions where tract E is being expanded and dedicated to private roads. So the existing conditions show tract E as reserved as private open space, public utility easement, and private drainage easement, with tract E being a width of 30 feet and lots 23 and 24 of approximate size of 17,000 square feet. Resource calculation for the subdivision is 52.7%. With the pre, with the proposed expansion of tract E and the dedication of tract E for private roads, there will be some impact to the adjacent lots, which will be reduced to 14,000 square feet. Tract E is being expanded to 61 feet in width, and the open space reservation is being abandoned. But the private drainage easement and public utility easement are remaining, and the revised tree preservation for Coconino Ridge is 50.3%. And this is above the 50% requirement for residential. This proposal does meet single-family residential standards. The density will be consistent with the existing conditions of the subdivision. There's no change to the density for the area. Lots are designed to meet resource protection requirements using specific building envelopes, and lot sizes are approximately 14,000 square feet, which exceeds the 6,000-square-foot requirement for the zone. Lot dimensions are approximately 84 feet wide by 135 feet deep, which exceeds the 65 by 100-foot minimum lot dimension for the zone. And the setbacks are being conformed to for the zone as well, with a front setback of 15 feet, 25 for parking, interior side setback of eight feet, street side of 15, and rear Cultural resource clearance was completed with the original approval for the subdivision. And while no parks or open space are required for the subdivision, the Pine Canyon development does include several open space amenities for the residents. And there is a foots trail that runs along the southern and western boundary on the adjacent plat, on the adjacent subdivision of Deer Creek Crossing Unit One. As for engineering standards, the public systems analysis was conducted to confirm preliminary compliance with engineering standards, and this will be confirmed further at civil plans, which would come after preliminary plat approval. And there was no TIA required for this subdivision, but it was reviewed with the entire, entirety of the Pine Canyon development area. There's no change to the existing infrastructure for water, wastewater for the subdivision. There's existing eight-inch water and sewer lines providing service to each lot in the subdivision. And stormwater analysis was completed for the entire Pine Canyon development, and there's no change with this proposal either. This proposal does meet preliminary plat procedures and application requirements, as well as minimum required subdivision improvements, which were identified in the previous slides for public systems analyses. This proposal is also consistent with the lot, street easement, and block design standards for subdivision and subdivision standards. That, this staff recommends the city council approve the preliminary plat in accordance with the findings presented in this report and the Planning and Zoning Commission recommendation of five zero. I believe the applicant is available online if you have questions for them as well.
Counsel, any questions, comments? Looks like we got this. Counsel, I will take a motion to approve the preliminary plat.
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you. H, Workforce Analysis and Strategic Plan, you are up.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Dave McIntyre, Community Investment Director. The item before you is consideration of and approval of the City of Flagstaff's Workforce Analysis and Strategic Plan as created by Keene Independent Research LLC. We had a work session on this item back in May 28th, and are returning now after further outreach and incorporating feedback. I will turn it over to Dr. Nicole Yates and Dave Keene for a brief presentation about the document for those who may not have seen it on the 28th, and to talk a little bit about what the changes are. And I will remain available for questions and further discussion as desired. And I see Dr. Yates up there. Hi, Dave, as well. Are you ready to share the presentation?
All right. Yes. Hello, everyone. Can you all hear me? Working on audio settings here. Okay, great. We're good. Fantastic. Okay, so, thank you, Dave, and hello, Mayor and Council. We are excited to present to you the revised workforce development strategic plan. So we have a brief presentation that I will share, and then we will pause for your comments All right. So what we'll do in this presentation, we'll give you kind of a brief recap of the study background and kind of just briefly touch on the workforce development strategy. Then we will talk about some of the themes in the feedback that we received between the last time we spoke to you and presented this preliminary version and now. And then we will highlight where some of the updates are to that strategic plan. So you all should have the, that final report that will incorporate all of this, that incorporates all of what you are going to see today. So first off, just some brief recap of the study background as a little refresher here. Our research tasks for this study included analysis of workforce data. That was mostly at the county level. We also conducted a series of interviews and focus groups with lots of stakeholders in the Flagstaff area. We continued some of those, we continued engaging some of those folks after we spoke to you initially with the, with the initial plan to receive some, some additional input from stakeholders in the city and county to improve the plan. We also conducted three case studies on Asheville, Bend, and Missoula, and have an appendix that reviews our lessons learned from each of those communities. We also created an inventory of existing programs and services that are designed to support workforce development in Flagstaff and the county, and then conducted a literature review as well. So I'm going to hand it over to Dave to talk a little bit about some of our, some of our background data and some of the projections for Flagstaff.
Dave, you are muted. It doesn't appear that your microphone is working correctly.
Okay, I am back on.
Oh, there it is.
Here we go.
Yay.
So you have seen this chart before. This is the State of Arizona projections for Coconino County. Many of these jobs are in Flagstaff or the Flagstaff area. And what the Stellato Economic Development Plan that we are following and supporting was showing is perhaps Flagstaff and, and the county and others in the area can work to achieve an even better balance of jobs in the future, including jobs that have a living wage for living in the Flagstaff area, which is a high cost of living area. You'll see that many of the jobs are in leisure and hospitality now, and the state projects future growth. There are certainly good jobs in that sector. There are jobs that it is difficult with the wages paid to be able to sustain a family and continue to stay in the Flagstaff area. And that was certainly something that we heard about, and upskilling employees in those occupations that might be able to move either to better jobs in that industry or to other jobs in other industries where the pay is better, the skill level is higher, and more compensation to be able to stay in the Flagstaff area. So again, this is not new information. We showed you this in the working session. This is the same chart as you saw in the, in the draft report. Next slide. We also showed you in the, in the prior presentation, and this is in the report, age distribution of people in Coconino County. This matches or is even more dramatic, kind of the bubble of young people in the Flagstaff area, if we were just to do this for the Flagstaff area. And in what we see is the same type of age distribution if we go back 20 years or 40 years, where there are a lot of young people in the Flagstaff area. And over time, young people do not stay. And we heard in qualitative research that it's very difficult for many people to be able to afford to live in the Flagstaff area as they get older and want to raise a family or want to buy a home, and many move outside the area. And certainly, the state forecast for Coconino County shows those, that they expect those patterns to continue. One of the challenges for Dr. Yates and myself, as we worked on the workforce development strategic plan, was to really challenge the, the city and others to say, what, what would it take, especially if you don't have a four-year college degree, to have training and opportunities to be able to get a job that has a wage that you can continue to stay in the Flagstaff area and not have to move to Phoenix or Southern California or elsewhere to be able to get a wage that would, you know, get you the, the lifestyle, be able to raise a family that you might be desiring. So again, this is information that you've seen before, and I'm going to hand it back to Dr. Yates.
All right. Thank you. So we'll just briefly review some of the key findings from the research that we conducted. So one of the challenges that we heard about throughout all of the interviews and focus groups that we, that we discussed was that Flagstaff really has this acute affordability challenge. There are, housing prices are high, housing availability is low, and these challenges really greatly affect the workforce. That we also talked about, and sorry, while I'm reading this, you all can kind of digest some of those quotes that are on the, the right side that kind of talk about, that are, that are from the interviews and focus groups that we, that we conducted with city and county stakeholders. Additionally, we looked into the WEOWA, the regulations there for funding, and typically the workforce development is conducted kind of at the, at the county and state level. The County Workforce Development Board, the Coconino County Workforce Development Board, is the steward of WEOWA dollars for Flagstaff and services the Flagstaff area. So city governments, I'm jumping kind of towards this, to the bottom here, because this is sort of related, but city governments typically don't lead these efforts for workforce development. They typically are supporting efforts at the county level and supporting existing programming that's, that's happening in their communities. We found this in the benchmark associations, or sorry, in the benchmark cities that we studied. And we, we also found this within the, the inventory that we conducted. There are a wealth of resources available that focus on workforce development in the Flagstaff area. NAU, CCC, and many private organizations also offer workforce development. An additional finding that we, that we touched on last time and kind of fleshed out a bit more in the new version of this report is that, is this income ceiling that, that affects who is eligible for WEOWA subsidized, WEOWA subsidy in participating in workforce development training program. So that ceiling is about $14,000 per year, which is going to limit the number of folks that can participate in, in that programming and have it subsidized. So our stakeholders position Flagstaff as really, imagine Flagstaff as, as really a leader in, in the conversation around workforce development, and then as a, really a partner or as a, a support mechanism for the county and for other entities in the community that are doing workforce development already. So this is our workforce development strategy. Nothing has really changed here since the last time you saw it, so just kind of briefly go through these. But we talked about the different pathways to careers, and we kind of did this in two. So first, we talk about four-year degree pathways, and then next you'll see pathways that are for careers that don't typically require a four-year degree. They're typically high school diploma or certifications are required for those. So the, your, your colleges, you know, your, your NAU and CCC already do an excellent job of graduating, of graduating workers with bachelor's degrees and more advanced degrees per year. And so we highlighted a few of these key priority sectors that were identified in the economic strategic plan that have jobs requiring a four-year degrees. And these are all, we were looking to kind of keep the threshold in terms of what the median annual earnings was of these jobs that we highlight in these tables, above around $50,000, which was about the amount that we, in our, in our research identified as for an individual to be able to live comfortably in Flagstaff. Obviously, comfortably is, is very up for interpretation, but that was the, the threshold that we looked at to kind of ensure that, that folks are economically self-sufficient. So as you can see, there are many careers that are quite lucrative in those priority sectors of astronomy, biomedical, and healthcare, and forestry. And then we also note that management-level positions kind of across sectors will typically require a bachelor's degree. Not all of them do, but a lot, a lot can. So then this is the high school diploma or equivalent pathways to those jobs that require those, that amount of experience. And so we have, CCC has a lot of programs that are available, two-year degree and certification programs that can serve as pathways to this job, these kinds of jobs. And so we primarily have those key priority sectors that, where we highlight occupations include manufacturing and food processing. Food processing kind of overlaps a lot with manufacturing, so it's not a separate category here, as lots of the jobs are the same. So you just see manufacturing on that table. We also added construction and transportation, because those are large industries in Flagstaff that also have many jobs available that will allow workers to be economically self-sufficient and don't require more than a high school degree and/or a certification or some, some college, but not, not requiring a bachelor's degree or higher. And then again, noting that individuals that are within these, these career paths can often advance to those more lucrative supervisory positions with experience on the job. And this is the, just transportation didn't fit on the last slide, so, but you all have seen this in the last presentation. So I'm going to move on to the goals here. So we presented a version of this last time, and the couple of things I want to highlight in terms of changes that we made, and we'll, we'll do a summary slide that, that goes over all the changes that we made to the, to the report, but a couple of things to highlight. We wanted to also include, we talked a lot with folks from FUSD, and so we also wanted to include them in to include them in the recommendation for formalized partnerships in addition to NAU and CCC. FUSD does a lot of dual enrollment. They have career development, they have a career development office. They have a lot of resources for their students already. And so working them into whatever agreements or partnerships that the city might have would be helpful in building that pipeline of skilled talent, starting early. Additionally, we, let's see, we also included in the promoting, goal number three, promoting upskilling programs for the city to build relationships with other organizations, so not just the educational institutions and the workforce development board and county, but other institutions, nonprofits, and community organizations that are engaging in these ongoing workforce development efforts. So there are a number of other organizations, and we highlight a few of those in our appendix that review some of the workforce development resources in the community. And then finally, I think, I actually think those were the major two changes in the goals and sample actions here. So again, you all should have this and can look at the, all of the kind of narrative around that in the summary report. So talking about some of the feedback that we received, so again, we talked with several folks within the city, from the county. We incorporated feedback that we heard in the session and feedback that we heard from members of the public who provided comments on the day we initially presented. So some of the key strengths that were identified in this plan were the way that we framed the issues in Flagstaff. We also, the positioning of the city as a partner in workforce development efforts. I think the feedback that we got seemed like folks were very receptive to that as an idea and as a, you know, as a potential role and a realistic role that the city could have that could help support existing efforts. Additionally, we heard that was appreciated that we integrated the workforce development plan with the economic strategic plan. We did work very closely with Stiletto throughout this process, and we shared information. And so our plans are very, they're very synergistic. And then also the focus on career pathways, so identifying that there might be, there will be different pathways depending on what the requirements of jobs are that folks are heading towards. That kind of breakdown of those is helpful to be able to see how different people with different plans might approach career planning. So the areas where there were, where stakeholders acknowledged that there was room for improvement, we could do, so between the first and the second version of this plan, we could, we did a better job of acknowledging and some of those ongoing workforce development activities by other entities. So again, added FUSD. Again, we spoke with folks from FUSD, and there, we did document in the first version of our report some of the activities that go on there, but we highlighted those a bit more in this next version. Also spoke to folks from the Greater Flagstaff Chamber of Commerce, and then we included some other local nonprofits that work, that have workforce development components. And then we also added a section at the end of the plan that has, that considers childcare and how the lack of affordable childcare affects workers in Flagstaff. So solving that or addressing that was not really within the scope of this study, but we did want to acknowledge it as a large factor that does affect workers in Flagstaff. So the updates, again, we broadened the workforce development partnerships for the city to consider, and then again, acknowledged that childcare was an important area for the city to consider despite being outside the scope of this study. And then in appendices, we added some workforce development activities from other local organizations to that inventory appendix, as well as explaining a bit more about the eligibility requirements for participation in IOA subsidized programs. And one of the recommendations, one of the recommendations as the city is considering how to implement this plan is, we recommend that the city also work with the county to be able to identify those folks that are eligible for participation in IOA subsidized programs. And so we have some more pointed implementation advice in that strategic plan as well. And that will conclude our presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you both. And thank you, Mr. McIntyre. Do you have anything that you would like to add?
I'll add briefly that we've actually started doing some research in what other cities are doing around childcare. So while it's not a scope as a part of this item, we're already working on that to try to better understand it because it did come up loud and clear. And also, we appreciate your time tonight.
Thank you. And counsel, we do have one member of the public who would like to address us, but if you have any questions, I will take those before. Seeing none, Regina Salas.
Howdy, Mayor and Counsel. I switch hats, so I now speak as the Assistant Director for our Arizona Work, Coconino Workforce Development Board, the federally mandated and funded program through the Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act, WIIOA, which mandates training and employment services to serve in-school and out-of-school youth, adult dislocated workers, veterans, individuals with disabilities and barriers, and seniors. The City of Flagstaff Workforce Analysis and Strategic Plan galvanizes promising collaborations and partnership for workforce development in our city that we are ready and very much enthused to pursue. Allow me to highlight some updates from our Arizona Work, Coconino Workforce Board. We are strengthening and expanding our 10 registered apprenticeship programs and 23 training programs in the eligible training provider list. We are energizing our employer-driven incumbent worker training and sector-driven customized training for upskilling, layoff aversion, and workforce reduction prevention. And we encourage employers in Flagstaff to tap into federal funding to train their current and future employees, as you can see in the flyer I issued, which also highlights our new customer-focused website, coconinoworks.org. As we work toward alignment with the governor's Workforce Arizona Council's goals and the Arizona at Work State Plan, we are in the process of updating our draft WIIOA Coconino Local Plan for 2025 to 2028. We are a partner in the Northern Arizona Good Jobs Network Blueprint initiated by Local First Arizona and regional partners, piloting accelerator skills-based credentials training on tourism, food service, manufacturing, transportation, construction, and healthcare. To improve our system-wide delivery, we are initiating partnership with the City of Flagstaff and other cities and towns in Coconino as we roll out the new online referral system, Atlas Kiosk, to be placed in public libraries and buildings. Implementing the City of Flagstaff Workforce Development Strategy will require breaking through silos, building more public-private partnerships, and synergizing workforce development endeavors. Thank you for your commitment to create a dynamic and resilient workforce that will drive our community's prosperity. And lastly, we would like to say thank you to our City's Economic Vitality Division for partnering with us in hosting the recent Arizona Summit, Workforce Summit reception. And we know how to host statewide conventions. Again, thank you, and I also shared with the city clerk some token of appreciation.
Thank you. All right, counsel, questions, comments? Counselmember Harris?
Thank you, Mr. McIntyre. Where'd he go?
Sorry. I'm giving you two.
For your presentation, and thank you to our consultants for all the great information. I hope everyone sitting in here heard what was said, especially, well, I guess I want to go back to, about housing. All of what we're doing is for naught if we don't figure out our housing. We have to figure out how to help developers build. We need to get out of their way, and that does not mean that we let them walk all over us. It means that we get out of the way and we try and do whatever we can to get those houses and apartments built. Because at the end of the day, if we don't build housing, all of what you've just done and all of what the research that they've done is for naught. It's just not going to make any difference. And it has a major impact on our climate plan because all of those folks that take care of us, our firefighters, our EMT, our teachers, some of our nurses, they're all living somewhere else because they can't live here. And so I would be interested to know how much emissions are coming back into the air or into our community with those folks driving in and out of town. So the only thing that I'm saying, and I sound like a broken record, and I'll keep sounding like a broken record, we've got to get a handle on the housing at all costs, pretty much at all costs, without letting developers get away with craziness. But thank you.
Counsel, additional questions, comments? Counselmember Sweet?
Thank you, thank you for the presentation, and thank you for listening to our feedback and incorporating that. You mentioned that you've been researching some childcare solutions from other communities. Do you have a snippet that you can share with us of some creative things that are going on?
So the National League of Cities has a number of different groups that are working on this, and some of our Valley Cities are a part of it. There's a number of other ways to do it. It's sort of preliminary because we've been focused here and looking at the implementation, but some of the ideas are working with the, working directly with childcare providers through apprenticeship programs, helping pay childcare providers to have apprentices which then develop more of a workforce around childcare and also provide needed staff for childcare facilities, working with programs that specifically work to train childcare providers, because again, those positions are hard to fill, and when you can't fill the position and you don't have good skills, then there's nowhere for people to put their children. It's grants as a potential way of going in terms of helping to develop better workforce around childcare as well. There's, there's some cities that actually have entered into working on providing childcare. That seems like a very massive scale type of an operation. But in general, most of what I've read so far, and again, preliminary, is focused on working to develop the childcare workforce itself, which of course helps provide skilled people to those facilities, and then working to provide apprenticeship programs around that and potentially subsidizing the childcare itself. But it'll depend a lot on what the resources are available and what the community says. I think this is a beginning of a conversation. One of the other things that's come up in the strategy as well, that's not as related to childcare, was more about focusing on that population that doesn't qualify for the $14,000 income limit IOA funding and working to, as Nicole said, as Dr. Yates said, help identify those folks so that they can get that funding, but then also potentially come in as a partner for organizations that are serving people at a higher level who don't have the funding, but potentially doing that. One more on the childcare side, I was waiting for it to pop back into my mind, was there's cities out there that have worked with employers who are struggling to find employees because of the childcare issues who are matching, sort of a matching fund with the business where it helps subsidize their workers' childcare. Again, there's a lot of details in all these types of programs, and I'm not sure what's going to fit Flagstaff yet, but we have started those conversations, and there's a lot of passionate people in our community that are interested in this. So we're excited to see where that conversation takes us. We also have the implementation strategy from this plan that we're going to be looking at. So we've got a lot to do.
Additional comments, questions? I will entertain a motion to approve the plan. So moved. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you so much for all the work that you all put into this over these past many months.
Thank you again.
All right, so before we move down to our regular agenda, we are going to take a 15-minute break. All right, we're ready to get started. We're going to move on to our regular agenda. Item number 10A, consideration and adoption of resolution number 2024-33. And I see Amy Hagan making her way down here.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Counsel here for this agenda item. We do not have a presentation, but I'm happy to answer any questions we may have regarding this IGA with Coconino County at Josie Montoya, Senior in Community Center.
Thank you, Amy. Counsel, do you have any questions? No, it's a great partnership, right? Our facilities, their program, for, yeah.
Absolutely. It serves about 25,000 meals per year. It's amazing.
Okay, so counsel, I will entertain a motion to read the resolution.
Mayor, I move to read resolution number 2024-33 by title only.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
City clerk? Oh, any opposed? City clerk?
A resolution of the Flagstaff City Council approving the extension of an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Flagstaff and Coconino County regarding the county's continued use of the Josie Montoya Senior Center to operate its senior nutrition programs.
And a motion to adopt?
I move to adopt resolution number 2024-33.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. 10B, consideration and adoption of resolution number 2024-34.
Thank you, Mayor and Counsel. Sterling Solomon, your city attorney. Typically, settlement agreements don't take much time during these meetings, but to recognize the magnitude and historic nature of this settlement and to make sure we're very clear, today I will provide additional information. I won't quite finish my comments in three minutes. Sorry. I'll try and cut it down from the two and a half hours I have. Actually, my children and others tell me that I'm showing signs of aging. They point out new wrinkles, gray hair. In short, they say I'm getting old, but I share that with you as an emphasis to provide context for what I'm about to say. I am getting older, but this settlement agreement involves litigation that began before I started kindergarten. It's been around for a long time, and this litigation is commonly referred to as the Little Colorado River adjudication. I'm going to get pretty technical here with some formal names and other information. It's formerly known as, in regard to the general adjudication of all rights to use water in the Little Colorado River adjudication, case number CV 6417, in regard to Hopi Reservation HSR, contested case number CV 6417-203, and in regard to Navajo Nation, contested case number CV 6417-300. As I mentioned, the litigation is definitely old. It's been going since 1978, and these comments from herefore will simply refer to the litigation as adjudication. This is a momentous settlement opportunity, and it's the result of a comprehensive water rights settlement that involves the water rights claims of the Navajo Nation, the Hopi Tribe, the San Juan Southern Tribe, the San Juan Southern Paiute, and the United States acting as trustee for all three in the adjudication. Staff is providing the City Council with a resolution authorizing approval of the Northeastern Arizona Indian Water Rights Settlement Agreement for the Council's consideration and potential approval. So the Northeastern Arizona Indian Water Rights Settlement Agreement dated as of May 9th, 2024, resolves certain water rights disputes in the adjudication, and specifically the Navajo Nation, the Hopi Tribe, and the San Juan Southern Paiute Tribe and the United States acting on trustee for all three, as trustee for all three. The Hopi Tribe approved the agreement on May 20th, 24, 24, and both the San Juan Southern Paiute and the Navajo Nation approved the agreement on May 23rd, 2024. The city has determined that it's in the best interests of the city to enter the agreement as well, to end protracted and costly litigation related to these water rights claims. The agreement anticipates federal funding for needed water supply infrastructure projects benefiting the Navajo Nation, the Hopi Tribe, and the San Juan Southern Paiute Tribe. The agreement will confirm among parties to the agreement certain surface water rights and groundwater rights for the city. Certain exhibits to the agreement must be completed or updated before execution of the final agreement by the parties, including the city's exhibits set forth in Attachment A to the resolution before you tonight. So for some historical context, in 2005, 71% of the voters in Flagstaff approved the acquisition of Red Gap Ranch located approximately 35 miles east of Flagstaff, specifically for the purpose of developing its future municipal water supply to provide water resiliency and water security for its residents. The city has invested millions of dollars in acquiring Red Gap Ranch for a municipal water supply project and continues to invest in the development of a regional water supply project, by conducting engineering and feasibility studies, design plans, hydrology studies, and by having drilled no less than 10 additional wells at Red Gap Ranch for municipal use. So in 2011, and in anticipation of a comprehensive water rights settlement that did not materialize at that time, the city entered into a stipulation with the Navajo Nation regarding Red Gap Ranch. However, that 2011 stipulation was never submitted to the adjudication court for binding effect and enforcement as between the parties to the 2011 stipulation and by its own terms remains null and void. So there is no stipulation or other agreement between the city and the Navajo Nation regarding Red Gap Ranch included as an exhibit to the agreement. But from a technical perspective, groundwater uses and wells are addressed in paragraph 9.0 of the agreement, which establishes two groundwater buffer zones. There is, the vast majority of Red Gap Ranch is located in at least one of these two buffer zones, and only one parcel of Red Gap Ranch, Feland, is located outside of the buffer zones. In paragraph nine of the agreement, it provides for the right to use groundwater from existing wells in the two buffer zones, and in paragraph nine also, existing wells located in buffer zone one and buffer zone two, as of the effective date, will be catalogued by the Arizona Department of Water Resources based on the capacity of the well or well casing sizes provided specifically in table one of the sub-paragraph 9.4.1 of the agreement. In buffer zone one on Red Gap Ranch, the city owns 11 existing wells with a total pumping capacity of 2,912 acre-feet per year. As further described in Attachment B, as further described in Attachment B, in buffer zone number two on Red Gap Ranch, the city owns 16 existing wells with a total pumping capacity of 19,003 acre-feet per year, as further described on Attachment B. Paragraph nine of the agreement allows for replacement of existing wells, and paragraph nine of the agreement also allows for drilling of new wells, but that's only subject to certain requirements. There are no restrictions on withdrawals of groundwater from wells that are located outside of the buffer zones. From a regional perspective, the regional water supply project is a critical component of the city's future water supply and necessary for the city's water resiliency and water security needs. The regional water supply project is also an important component of the agreement because paragraph 12.0 allows the Navajo Nation to have access to the regional water supply project by entering into water supply contracts with the city as described in the agreement. So I want to emphasize that point because paragraph 12.0 allowing that access to the Navajo Nation to the regional water supply project is a key component to make it regional. And in paragraph nine of the agreement, the Arizona State Land Department agrees to coordinate with the city regarding the drilling of new wells on Arizona state land, parcels that are in and around Red Gap Ranch for the benefit of the regional water supply project. As the city continues to identify in coordination with Arizona Department of Transportation and other further anticipated input from regional participants, including the Navajo Nation, the Hopi Tribe, and the Arizona State Land Department, various points of access to the regional water supply project at ADOT intersections along Interstate 40 or at other mutually beneficial locations will come to pass. Further, or to further development of the regional water supply project, the city is seeking federal funding on a cost-share basis. So tonight, City Council's adoption of this resolution will authorize, number one, the city's approval of the Northeastern Arizona Indian Water Rights Settlement Agreement subject to the inclusion of the correct city exhibits attached to the resolution, and number two, authorize and direct the city attorney to make such conforming or other changes as might be required and consistent with the agreement before formal execution of the agreement by the city. Number three, the city manager and the city attorney to take such other actions as are necessary to carry out the purpose of the resolution, and number four, the city manager and city attorney to seek federal funding on a cost-share basis for the further development of the regional water supply project described in the agreement and by other legislation grants or other viable sources. So based upon all of these facts and for these reasons, it's my recommendation to approve the settlement. In closing, and at the risk of sounding like an Oscar winner at Academy Awards, there are a couple of recognitions I'd like to give on such a historic occasion. First to you, Mayor and Council. Thank you to all prior councils as well, who have been involved in this, for taking the time to wrap your minds around very complex and complicated water adjudication and settlement matters. Because ultimately, this agreement involves 39 total parties. That's complex in and of itself. Thank you to the city manager's office for the continuing support of efforts assuring the city of Flagstaff has a future water supply. I want to say thank you to my staff, who have helped with many matters, covering things while I've been involved in the negotiations. It's greatly appreciated. I want to thank Shannon Jones, our current Water Services Director, and Erin Young in Water Services, as well as other employees in Water Services. Their technical expertise has been invaluable. Much appreciation also goes to Brad Hill, who's with us here tonight, former Water Services Director, involved with the case and settlement for more than 15 years, and he continues to assist the city on all technical aspects. Finally, a special thank you to Attorney Lee Story, who provides legal advice and counsel to the city on this adjudication and the settlement. She has been in every facet of all legal matters involving Flagstaff's water future since Mayor Bavasi was in office in 1996. Lee's foresight, insight, knowledge, experience, expertise, and amazing legal mind continue to be, in my opinion, the single greatest asset the city has in securing a regional and Flagstaff water supply. So with that, your options tonight are, number one, to approve the resolution authorizing the settlement agreement that resolves the water rights claims of the Navajo Nation, the Hopi Tribe, the San Juan Southern Paiute, and the United States acting as trustee for each tribe, and confirms among the parties to the agreement the city's water rights in the adjudication, or, number two, not approve the resolution and continue litigation with these three tribes and the United States acting as trustee for each, as well as the other parties involved in the litigation. Mayor and Council, we recommend to you to approve resolution 2024-34, authorizing approval of the Northeastern Arizona Indian Water Rights Settlement Agreement. Thank you.
Sterling, thank you so much. How many times did we see Sterling running through a building with an AirPod in one ear? He's having two different conversations at the same time. Counsel, do you have any questions before I take public comment? She has a comment, looks like. No questions? All right. I am going to take public comment. Dwight Witherspoon.
Good evening, Mayor Daggett and members of the council, certainly your city managers, council, and staff. I am Dwight Witherspoon. I'm a Flagstaff resident, live at 997 East Pine Knoll. All five of my children have graduated from Flagstaff High School, got my master's at NAU in educational leadership, and have been in and out of Flagstaff as well as on the Navajo Reservation through many years. I'm also representing the Navajo Nation, an attorney with the Navajo Nation in the Water Rights Unit. And I did want to provide some context on this water rights settlement as well. The water rights settlement is on its fourth proposal. Back in 1999, there was a proposal that didn't reach nearly as far as this settlement has gone. There was a proposal in 2010. There was a 2012 proposal when I was on the Navajo Nation Council as a delegate, and we have the 2024 proposed settlement. As indicated, the litigation or claim started with Phelps Dodge in 1978. The Navajo Nation initiated its claims in 1985. The claims for Phase One for the Navajo Nation occurred last summer, and it took about four months. Claims for Phase Two would be in 2027, and there's a whole list of new categories, and litigation is very expensive. So we certainly agree and would request your consideration of supporting the water rights settlement for the Navajo Nation, certainly the Hopi Tribe, the San Juan Southern Paiute Tribe, and for certainly all the 39 water users in the Little Colorado River Basin and watershed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Witherspoon. I have a question for you. Were you involved in this matter before you were on the council?
Before I was on the council? No.
So you've been involved for 12 years?
The, certainly serving on the council, developed my interest in water rights. It got me to go to law school. I graduated in May of 2022, and I am now back where I wanted to be, working on water rights.
So you went through all of this and decided you wanted to go to law school?
Yes.
Well, thank you very much for your comments. Councilmember House?
Thank you, Mayor. Sterling Lee, Mr. Witherspoon, the full team that's worked on this, thank you so much for all of the efforts that have gone into getting us to this point. Since Mr. Solomon brought up age, I'll just go ahead and reference on the slide because as I get older, I have to do this more and more often to remind myself that I'm still kind of young. This all started before I was even born. So to be in a position now, to be approving this settlement, is, as Mr. Solomon said, a momentous event, and I'm grateful for the opportunity to be part of it, and very much grateful to everyone who has had a hand in this over many, many years to get us to this point. So thank you very much and looking forward to our vote.
Councilmember McCarthy, do you have a comment aside from a motion? Because there are additional comments.
I do, but you can let them go first.
Councilmember Matthews?
Thank you, Mayor. I too want to just express just my appreciation. I walked by Lee out in the lobby, and I, she kind of looked familiar, but until I heard her voice, I thought, oh my gosh, that's story in person. It's been a long time coming, so welcome for being here. Thank you for being here and celebrating with us. This is such a privilege to be on council during this historic time. Water is life, and to come to an agreement with all of our tribal neighbors and other stakeholders is just amazing to see, and it secures our water for all of us in this area. So just thanks to everybody, and yes, Sterling, just as you dart off all the time and run off to take phone calls when you're in the middle of negotiations and stuff. So I just want to express my appreciation for everybody, and I know it's been just countless hours, so thank you so much.
Mr. Witherspoon, I just want to express again how appreciative we are of you joining us this evening. It means a great deal that a partner would be here with us in the room when we, it sounds like we're going to, that we're going to adopt the resolution. So thank you for being here. Thank you to everyone who has had a hand in this over the years and the patience that it took to stay at the table for all of these years. This is no small accomplishment, and I hope that those of you who have been most intimately involved will give yourself an hour or two break to deep breathe before you're into your next issue. But I'm very, I'm grateful for our partners, for our neighbors, for being at the table with us and working through this. So I think we're-
Mayor, I did have one more thing, and I'm only bringing it up because Councilmember Matthews mentioned water is life. The irony is, one of the greatest components of this settlement agreement is to bring some water from the upper basin, from Lake Powell, for the tribes, and ironically, that is the name of that pipeline. But it's a combination of all three languages. It's pronounced, and Mr. Witherspoon can let me know if I'm slaughtering it, but Inabapatuacatzi. That's it. Water is life, and I think that's a perfect cap on what this settlement is.
Thank you. All right, Councilmember McCarthy, would you like to make a motion?
I will. A couple of comments first. I would like to point out that Sterling Solomon is older than all of my grandchildren. The other thing I'd like to point out is, I've been on council eight years, and I served on the Water Commission where Brad Hill was our liaison for five years before I was on council. And boy, have I sat through a lot of meetings on this, public meetings, executive sessions, and everything. So I think, we usually don't go around congratulating this much, but this one is really deserving of that congratulations. So Lee Story and Brad and everyone else that's worked on this, I'll just say two words. Thank you. So Mayor, I move that we read, and it's with pleasure that I move, that we read resolution 2024-34 by title.
And Mayor, it would be my honor to second that. All right. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Yay.
Any opposed? All right. City Clerk?
A resolution of the Flagstaff City Council authorizing approval of the Northeastern Arizona Indian Water Rights Settlement Agreement.
And a motion to adopt? I move to adopt resolution number 2024-34. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed?
Aye.
All right. Okay, moving down, item number 11, A, Annual Update of the Care Unit. We have a very button-down gentleman coming here to share some information with us?
Not really a big act to follow, no biggie, no pressure.
No pressure at all.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Seth Gregor, EMS Captain, Flagstaff Fire Department.
Brian Guest, Director of Northern Arizona Crisis Services for Teros Health.
And we are here today to give the 2023 Annual Report for the Care Unit. So, just a quick recap on the beginning of this unit and the intent of this unit. This was a vision of all of you in previous council that we needed to get creative with an alternative response unit that addressed some of our homeless, unsheltered, mental health issues in our community, as well as taking some of those calls off of our all-risk units, which PD and fire more specifically. A RFP went out early 2022, and Teros picked up that contract. We've been working with them for, we're almost three years now, and it's currently staffed with a crisis clinician on the Teros side as well as a firefighter EMT. Intention of this unit is with public outreach and through the 911 dispatch, we're looking to support those individuals that I mentioned and reduce those calls on our all-risk units. Heat map here for all of you to kind of see where these calls are generated. As expected, it kind of falls in line with the Route 66 corridor, east side, that big red dot's kind of the east side Safeway area, off Marketplace. And then we have down Milton, Woodlands is also a hot area too. So, pretty dispersed throughout the city. Since the January of 2023, we're up over 2,000 calls for this unit. It's keeping those all-risk units from going lights and sirens to these, which the, they're wanting them to stay in service for those calls. Okay, so 1,680 of those calls were diverted from the emergency department, and that, over those 2,000 calls, that's roughly 10% of our fire department calls. Along with the intent of the Omega calls, I'll go over the Omega afterwards on the next slide, but they've done over 1,000 outreaches. And what they provide on those is resources. It could be just a pamphlet as far as available resources in town. It could be sandwiches. It could be cultural things that are needed for our indigenous people. It could be water. Let's, we have some more slides for that, too. I'll let Brian take over on this one.
All right. So, what you see here is some numbers for calls for service or dispatches for Flagstaff Police Department. The first four rows are Flagstaff Police Department, and the bottom two are for Flagstaff Fire Department. A couple of years prior to the Care Unit, and then '22 and '23, after the Care Unit began service. So, when you look at calls for service itself, the biggest change you see is those Flagstaff Fire Department man-down responses have gone down significantly. Also, the number of arrests transported to Flagstaff Medical Center has gone down significantly as well. I'm not sure what the connection is there exactly, but other numbers, you might notice, have not gone down much, and I think that's just indicative of the fact that really ever since COVID, crisis has been up, mental health, substance use issues have been up, and 911 continues to be a go-to for people who are experiencing those issues. So, we're excited to present some encouraging numbers relating to arrests and bookings for substance use and mental health-related incidents. So, this table here shows arrest data in the hours that the Care Unit operates, so 9:00 AM to 7:00 PM. In 2020, which was prior to the Care Unit operating, compared to 2022, when the Care Unit first started operating, and we can see there, if you can see that, it's about a 65% reduction in alcohol and drug-related arrests in that timeframe between 2020 and 2022. And then we were able to maintain those low numbers in 2023 as well.
So, when this was first put into service, we had to work with our partners over at PD and dispatch to come up with a way that we can dispatch these out. My predecessor, determined by going with an Omega assignment, it's not lights and sirens, it's a non-urgent call. As Brian will show in the next couple of slides, we're responding in about 12 minutes to those calls, regardless if it's east side, west side. I think the freeway helps us out a lot with those dispatches. So, the, it's sending that right unit to those lower-acuity calls. When we're talking about the instances where those individuals get on scene and make an assessment, we're only upgrading it 15% of the time to a full medical response. As Brian mentioned, the unit is in service from 0900 to 1700, but we're trying to gather the data of what it looks like after hours when the unit's not in service. So, 1900 to 0900. As of the last five months, we're at 112. So, we're seeing those calls after hours, but this is a work in progress right here. We're still trying to determine if the expansion is needed or anything with that. So, I continue to work with KD over in dispatch to make sure we're capturing those numbers after hours, and they're doing a great job with that.
Seth, I have a question. So, are those going out with no lights and sirens as well? Or you're just keeping track of the number of those types of calls that come in after hours?
So, when the 911 call or the non-emergency call comes into dispatch, it goes through a system that dispatch uses, an EMD system. And if it's determined Omega, they'll send it out in the after-hours as Omega. As far as the lights and sirens, no, they're not going lights and sirens. So, that after-hours Omega calls go out, fire truck, ambulance.
So, we see some definite seasonal trends with the Care Unit. This graph doesn't portray it particularly well, but we see definite increases in our call volume in the summer months, definitely our busiest times. What this graph does portray, hopefully, is that we've seen continued growth and expansion and higher dispatch rates for the Care Unit. So, quarter four of 2023 was significantly busier than that same quarter in 2022, and then quarter one of 2024 was significantly busier than that same quarter in 2023. So, continued increased use of the Care Unit. Seth alluded to this earlier. Essentially, this is just showing our response time is relatively constant. We're not lights and sirens, so we're dealing with the same traffic complications as every other vehicle in Flagstaff, and so we're pretty proud of that 12-minute response time for getting from one end of Flagstaff to the other. So, when the Care Unit is activated, the vast majority of the time, it's through this Omega dispatch that Seth has explained. So, 77% in '22, 85% in 2023 of our dispatches have been through that, which is basically showing that the 911 dispatch center is doing a great job in screening and sending the right type of response for these situations that don't need the lights and sirens, police, ambulance, fire response. We do see other types of dispatches as well, others, kind of all-encompassing, as well as law enforcement will sometimes ask for us directly when they've already been dispatched and are on scene, but think it's something that's more appropriate for care. When the Care Unit is done on scene, the most typical outcome is that the individual that we're seeing is kept in the community essentially where they are. So, we've checked in with them. We've connected them with resources, basic needs. Usually, we'll make sure to, you know, if they're going to continue to be there, be somewhere else where they're not quite as visible or not quite as likely to have 911 called on them again. But the majority of the time, there's not a medical emergency. It's just a person needing resources, and we can provide that. Additionally, we rely, continue to rely really heavily on the shelter. So, we're extremely lucky to have a shelter here that will allow us to drop people off there. Even when intoxication is an issue, we can rely on them to keep our people safe. We do see about 15% overall that we do escalate medically, so we get on scene, and the EMTs determine that this is a medical emergency that does need that lights and sirens response. But again, that 15% would have been 100% of those types of responses prior to the Care Unit. And then you can see there's a big number of canceled calls. So, this is typically, we'll get to the scene, and the person is no longer there, which could happen for a variety of reasons, but usually it's because that person wasn't experiencing a medical emergency in the first place and probably just went off somewhere else on their own volition. So, we know that everyone has very complicated stories and histories. When we get on scene, though, we do identify a single primary issue for that encounter, and the vast majority of those for the Care Unit is issues of substance use and intoxication, which I believe is what it was designed to do, what the council envisioned that it would do. So, we're doing a good job there. In addition, we often will see people where substance use isn't an issue in that moment, but they just need connection to resources, services, again, those basic needs that we'll talk about a little more.
I have a quick question about that as well.
Yeah.
Do you have a breakdown as to what substances you're seeing people under the influence of?
We don't keep data on that exactly. I mean, often, it's multiple. You all will talk to some of our clinicians on the ground later, and they can probably talk to, speak to some of this, too. But I think it's overwhelmingly alcohol. I think meth is probably the second most common. But yeah, we don't track that data specifically. Sometimes, we're not even aware. They might not tell us or are unable to tell us or whatever the case might be. So, a huge component of the Care Unit is proactive outreach. So, when the team's not dispatched out, they will drive around the city, and they have some hotspots in particular that they'll visit most frequently to see if there's people there that are looking like they need some sort of help or someone to talk to or some sort of resource. And this is really, again, a huge part of the Care Unit, to build that rapport with the community so that maybe the next time there is an emergency and we'll roll up on that same person, they'll already know us, they'll be willing to engage with us. And it also just shows the community that, you know, the Care Unit is there, the Care Unit is helping this person, no need to call 911, we've got it kind of thing. And it also just shows that Flagstaff is a compassionate and caring community that wants to provide the right type of response for these types of issues. Some common spots that we do this proactive outreach in includes downtown, so the Wheeler Park Library area, as well as the bus transfer station on the west side, the Safeway Shopping Center, the Walmart Shopping Center, and then the whole kind of Milton corridor there. And on the east side, we will frequently visit the Flagstaff Shelter, the Food Bank, Bushmaster Park, and then the Highway 89 Safeway as well. And distribution of basic needs, this is something we do a lot of, both with the proactive outreach and when we're dispatched out to see somebody. So, thanks to the Flagstaff Family Food Center, we've been able to give out over 1,000 sandwiches since 2023, almost that many bottles of water. We are provided from Napta some bus passes that we can give out for free, blankets, winter coats, Narcan, which is the opioid overdose prevention drug. We also try to have supplies on hand that are relevant for what's going on in that moment. So, when we know it's going to be a rainy day, we'll make sure that we have rain ponchos in the vehicle, et cetera. And then informational pamphlets. So, if the person is in a place where they want to reach out to another agency for help, we can give them that information. All right. So, hopefully, the information and data that I've presented to you has been useful, but I also want you guys to hear from the people that are actually doing the work. So, I'm going to have Marge from Teros and Erin from the Flagstaff Fire Department talk to you about some of the real-life impacts that they've been able to have.
Hi, I'm Marge Chase. I work on the Teros side of the Care Unit. I've been here since day one, when we were driving our little Teros van to where we are driving in our big old van today. As we all know, that the Care Unit does provide services and resources to the clients, mainly from the people who are unsheltered relatives in town with substance use issues, to families who kind of just kind of fall down on their needs and need some support and services. We definitely raise, okay, I'm sorry, most of our calls consist of third-party callers for someone who's kind of sleeping on the side of the street sidewalk or something like that. That's where most of our calls do come from. And a lot of times, we try to keep that autonomy with them. What do you need? What is it that I can support you with? And a lot of times, they don't want our help. They don't want our services, which is fine, too. So, we give out water. You need anything? Sandwich, of course, the summertime, Gatorade, a rain poncho, new socks, something that could provide their basic needs at that moment. And we also have that, I always call it the gray area. We call from, just one of my basic calls was a recent one, we were told to cut a story. And every time I have a story, I have another story. Then I have another story. Then I have another story. So, it's really hard for me to hold one story, but I think my biggest one, recent one, was we were called by a third party. They requested no police, no medical, and no fire department. So, again, we have this conversation, what's going to happen? What do I do in that process? I usually try to make calls to the guidance center. Is there a possible bed space? Hey, Flag Shelter, is there, you know, I'm just preparing myself for what I'm going on to. We get to the call. It was an employee at Circle K. They obviously knew the Care Unit, so they called and said, this person needs some services. And soon as we get there, she's just bawling, crying. She was dropped off by her husband. If anybody knows any victim witness services in human trafficking, husbands are somebody who leaves their perps for making money. And so, we end up having to get ahold of victim witness and moving her, and victim witness stated that they can't move her because she's under the influence. We gave up our services again so we can transport the person who was under the influence to a private hotel where they weren't going to be able to be found in the city of Flagstaff. We were able to get ahold of family members to try to get them moving from one, from Flagstaff out of town. Family didn't even know they were, she was missing for two weeks. So, these are those processes that we have in conjunction with all of our services and the resources that we have here in Flagstaff. Victim witness, Flagstaff Shelter, I cannot thank them enough for the amount of movement we have all day. We do a soft handoff every day, make sure we know where we're going. If they don't, you've asked about substance use. Mainly, we would do is, you know, ask like, hey, what's going on? What do we need? Have we been drinking? Have we been using? So, we can do the best services we can. A lot of it is, basically, a lot of it is alcohol use. If it is fentanyl, we do try to provide that Narcan for them, you know, don't use without, by yourself, use with a friend or something, just so that we're providing that services for them. The guidance center is also, you know, if you're detoxing, what services can we provide to you to move forward on what we can best provide services? The Guidance Center is also, you know, if you're detoxing, what services can we provide to you to move forward on what we can best provide services to? So that's where we come from on, I come from on my end of the mental health part of it. So.
Got a quick question for you. So do you work for Teros and the Guidance Center?
Oh, no, I work specifically, got hired by the Teros unit. I was, it was funny, I was just talking about that. I actually got hired by Teros and was actually also had to be interviewed by a Flag Fire.
For the care, okay, okay. Thank you, thank you.
Mayor, Council, thank you for having me. My name's Aaron Corbier with the Flagstaff Fire Department. I am a Flagstaff local, born and raised here, and I actually played football with one of Mr. Witherspoon's sons. So it's, it's really an honor and a privilege to serve the community that I grew up in. So I've had a lot of interesting calls on the care unit, a lot of them with Marge. But I wanted to take a few moments to share a success story from the care unit that I feel really hits and goes above and beyond the intended purpose of the care unit. So Marge and I were, we were dispatched to the jail, to pathways. And if you're unfamiliar with pathways, which I wasn't until I went for this call, it is a resource for the individuals that were incarcerated as they get released to help them reintegrate back into the public with the purpose to help prevent reoffending, to just help get them what they need. And so we were, we were requested for a ride to the shelter. And when we got there, the pathway staff, they front-loaded us with a bunch of information on this particular individual. And he was, he was confused. And hard of hearing, very hard of hearing. And so we started asking him some questions to try and get to the bottom of the confusion, to make sure that there wasn't a medical emergency going on. And he was alert and oriented to, he, he knew where he was, he knew what was going on. And so, and he said that he didn't want to go to the hospital. So our job at that point was to try and figure out the best resources that we could give him in this particular situation. So his belongings happened to be at the Flagstaff Shelter, and so he needed a ride to the shelter. But in my inquiries to try and figure out what might be contributing to the confusion that he was exhibiting, he had told, told us that he had high blood pressure. And further questioning, he didn't know when the last time he had his blood pressure medication was. And he said that he didn't have any more with his belongings at the Flagstaff Shelter. So I asked him what pharmacy he went to and if I could call them to see if he had any refills available. And he gave me permission to do so. So I called the pharmacy, they said that he did have refills available and that he actually had some available for pickup. They said that there weren't any co-pays, and so we decided that the best thing for this gentleman was to pick up his prescriptions on our way to the, to the shelter. And while I went in to pick up the prescriptions and consult with the pharmacist, Marge was with the, with the client as well as speaking with Adult Protective Services throughout his, in the past, while he was incarcerated, he ended, ended up on Adult Protective Services radar. But they haven't, hadn't had the chance to have a meeting with them yet. So Marge was working on trying to get that organized and lined out and relaying the importance of ensuring that that meeting happened. While I was consulting with the pharmacist, because he didn't just have a prescription available, he had seven ready for pickup and several of them were blood pressure medications. So I just wanted to ensure that he could take all these medications without them interacting poorly with each other. So once we got his prescriptions picked up, we continued on to the shelter and he, when we got there was, the call became even more unique. Because he, it became apparent that he couldn't really manage his medication based on the confusion that he was exhibiting throughout, in one of his court appearances, somebody had mentioned to him that he had, may have early onset dementia, but it wasn't something that had been diagnosed by a doctor. So again, to the importance of Adult Protective Services getting involved so that the resources that he needed could be presented to him. So I was getting all of his prescriptions organized for him. And as an EMT, I can administer medications. But he can, of course, take his own medication. So after reading through the bottles, I told the gentleman, you are due for this medication. You need to take one of each. And he went on to grab a different bottle, opened the cap and dumped the bottle in his mouth. Which, not knowing which one that he had gotten or really ingesting that number of any medication isn't good. So I kind of started to get a little worked up, telling him to spit the medication out and he spit it out into the bottle. And so I did a pill count and thankfully he didn't ingest any of them. So then I grabbed one of his prescriptions and held it up to him and said, sir, can you read any of the information on this bottle? He says, no, no, I can't. My eyeglasses were, some of my possessions were stolen, including my eyeglasses. So he was, had signs of early onset dementia, very hard of hearing, and can't see without his glasses. So the real issue that was very evident was his inability to manage his medications that were very important to his health. I mean, with this high blood pressure and having four or five medications, if he's not taking those, that could lead to serious health issues. In the Flagstaff Shelter, they're, they're not able to manage people's medication. They said that they could keep an eye on him, but they couldn't manage his medication, understandably so. So Marge and I really had to start thinking outside the box, how we were gonna ensure that this man was safe and that he was cared for and his medication was managed. So earlier in the day, on another call, we had taken somebody to the, to the Guidance Center and they had spaces available, which is really pretty rare. And so while this wasn't a mental health emergency, we decided to reach out to the Guidance Center. And Marge was able to speak to one of the staff members, let them know what was going on. And they said that they would, that they would take him. He, and the man at this point was experiencing some anxiety as well. So through some persistence and out-of-the-box thinking, we were able to find the best resources that were available to us to ensure that this man was cared for and that he was safe and his medications were managed for at least the next few days. So it, while most of our calls typically take probably about a half hour.
Ten minutes.
Yeah, ten minutes, twenty minutes. We spent Yeah, between dispatch time and all the transport, we were with him for about two and a half hours. But it was an opportunity for us to really ensure that this person was taken care of and that they were safe. So just wanted to take some time to share with you guys a success story of the intended purpose of the care unit.
Thank you for that. And, and understanding those individual stories and the types of assistance that you're able to give is so important to us and to the community and understanding the true value of this entire program. Stories like that. So thank you.
I think our success stories fall through under that latch of like, if we don't see them again, we know they're doing okay. And those are huge stories when we come about. Sometimes we're like, I wonder what happened to so-and-so, I wonder what's, I wonder what's going on. But we also realize that they're actually in a safe, it seems like they're in a safe place. And so this particular story, the whole conversation, APS, make sure you call APS, did not need to go to ED, what if he just gets, falls through the cracks? And so that conversation was like specifically set for that situation. And hopefully somebody's able to hear and see what that, what's happening. And the success story I always say is, if I don't see them again, you know, that, to me, that's a good story because he got services and somebody's, you know, helping him out. Anybody who comes out and we run on them, we, that's always that conversation, what can we do to best support you?
And I think for me, one of the, I mean, it's, one of the things that I love about the program is, is people feeling like there's someone watching out for them. And so th- this person and all the other people that you help, feeling like this community cares about them as an individual and what they're going through, it means a lot.
It's a huge difference, especially when I'm Navajo. So a lot of times when I talk to them in Navajo, they like perk up and they're like, oh, hey, you know? And that conversation comes up, especially at the shelter, when we know that, they know we're showing up, they're like, oh, they have, they have sandwiches, they have Gatorade, they have, they have a rain poncho. And so we come up, I'm like, okay, prepare for ourselves, you know? So we have to make sure we have enough for everybody to serve as much as we can to what we have to them. We've even gotten people we don't even know and we'll pick them up and the EMT is like, hey, let me help you up. And they're always like, why, why are you taking time out for me? And it's that particular people that we want to make sure that they are still people, they're still human beings in this town. And I always tell them like, they're here, they're, they got muscle, that's why they're here to pick you up. And, and so they're like, why are you, why, why me? Why are you helping me? And so just a reminder that they are still human beings in this town and this world and people still worry about them. So.
Thank you. Is, is that the end of, okay?
There should be a mic drop there, but no, there's more.
So as Brian and Marge and Erin alluded to, we couldn't do this without our partners. Flagstaff Shelter Services is huge in this. They're, they are the number one facility that we take them to. While that's not even really their role, maybe. Maybe a more dedicated facility for that would be better, still yet to be determined. But we are relying on them heavily to take in these unsheltered clients so that they're out of the, the environment. And as you can see, Guidance Center, Family Food Bank, Salvation Army, S M R is the Snow Mountain Riding, I think, sorry. River, there we go. They provide a lot of the, the coats for us, I think sleeping bags as well. Mountain Lion provides the, the bus passes. We have NACA, we have Continue of Care, which is a collection of a lot of these, a, a lot of these agencies are involved with the Continue of Care. And that's a statewide continuum. And many others. So we wouldn't be doing a service to this, this unit if we didn't continually evaluate it. We are still meeting, we are still encountering some challenges with it. And currently, right now, I'm EMS captain, direct oversight over the cares unit. For some more boots-on-the-ground configuration, we, it looks like we need to expand that a little more maybe. Just to try to have that presence there with them and make sure it continues its success. Data collection between us, Teros, Guidance Center, Flagstaff Services, that's, that's also a very challenging thing because none of us work on the same platforms. I think Brian does his collection on an Excel spreadsheet. And we're on a completely fire-based information gathering. So still a challenge there. Current model is taking calls off the fire and PD unit. The follow-up to that is it, the calls are still coming in. We're still seeing increases in calls year to year. They're still going through dispatch, they're still having to vet them. So their call volumes is increasing just as they send them out to those PD and fire units. It's been challenging to make sure we just keep that dispatch model in place, keep it in the lines as far as what is an omega call, what is not omega call. And currently working with K D at Dispatch to get a more robust EMD system in place so that we can do better with that. As mentioned, the facility for the care staff, they're currently at Fire Station Number Six in our community room. And the clients, while other models have shown that a separate facility might be the best for them, we're relying on our partners for that right now. And continuing evaluation of are we putting out the best product with the correct staffing that's on it? What that looks like, we're working with staff right now to see configurations and see if there's something there that, that might work better.
So to that point and your first point, the ongoing need, can, can you give us an example of what you're talking about with the fire management over care under current configuration?
So as stated EMS captain, I'm taking care of regional EMS training, getting my hands in on our certifications, our recertifications, things like that, making sure everybody's up to date on all of those things. And then this day-to-day calls. The cares unit and the relationship with them, there are more presence there could be utilized. Is that answering your question, Mayor?
Thank you.
So, so what's next for this? As I mentioned, Continue of Care, I got invited to be on the executive board or committee, I'm not sure which one it is. A great avenue to just try to pull resources together. I'm still, to be honest, I'm still trying to find my niche. There's a lot of stuff there that's, might not be applicable to this, but there, it just shows me there's a lot of resources out there. And trying to get them together has been a challenge, but I'm working on it. Teros contracted with CES Partnerships for their program evaluation to make sure that they're upholding the, their end of the bargain and to make sure that they're doing it efficiently and well. October nineteenth, two thousand twenty-four is end of the initial three-year contract. After that, a option for two one-year re-ups comes. In conclusion, it's doing its scope. It's, it's taking those calls off of the PD and fire units to keep them available for emergencies, reducing the number of rests and bookings for alcohol-related offenses. Number of transports to the emergency department are going down. Addressing the community needs with that proactive outreach, those resources that we talked about, allowing those all rest units to be available and then connecting and transporting those shelter, unsheltered clients to a centralized area. That's her van, if you haven't seen it. And that should be it. Any questions, comments?
Yes. First, we have Councilmember House.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, team, for this presentation. I, I know we gave you some flack at the beginning joking that, you know, how do you follow up the, the conversation about the water litigation? But I just want to emphasize that as much as we know that water is life, a compassionate response in a time of crisis is also life. And so this work that you're doing is essential for our community. And I'm so grateful to you for doing this work, for relieving the pressure of, of non-emergency response from our first responder teams. And also presenting that compassionate and culturally responsive care at a time when people really need it. I'm, I'm really particularly going back to the story that, that one of your members shared on just the impact it has to have someone hear their own language or, or know that they are being met where they are in that time when they may feel unseen, they may feel unheard, and they may feel that no one cares about the crisis point that they're experiencing. So I am so grateful to you for doing this work. I look forward to supporting you in these efforts for Um, I, uh, look forward to supporting you in these efforts for years to come and hearing more how we can continue to support and advance this program to make it the full scope of a program that our community needs. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Meta Mayor. Hi, Brian, hi Seth. Couple of questions for you, you're both welcome to address each of them. I think I, one might be more appropriate. Uh, Brian, I'll start with you. What is the data or the chatter out there about how this program is being received in the wider world, uh, across the nation? What kind of momentum is being built here? Uh, what's, what's the, what's, what's the scuttlebutt, uh, out there? And are there, are there real ways in which, um, we're monitoring and evaluating how this movement is growing, uh, and things are changing, uh, from the ground up all throughout the country?
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think Flagstaff, um, was sort of on the front end of this movement of how can we respond in more effective, more compassionate ways to emergencies that aren't a criminal thing, aren't a danger thing, aren't a immediate medical emergency? And so, you know, the care unit's not the first in the country to do this. Uh, we've had some predecessors that we've been able to model our response off of. But at the same time, um, it continues to be a very innovative and sought-after approach. Um, earlier, actually it was last year, we were invited to present at the Fire Chiefs, uh, International Fire Chiefs Association Annual Conference in Kansas City. So, uh, we were able to present to a really wide audience from throughout the country about, about our model. Earlier this year, uh, a police or a fire chief who was at that conference reached back out to us, uh, he was from St. Louis Park, Minnesota, I believe, and wanted to meet with us some more to talk, talk about some more of the details of how we're doing, what we're doing and, and how they can emulate that. We've also got more locally, um, Bullhead City is looking to implement a similar type program and they've come up and visited and, and shadowed the unit as well. So I think it's, it's, it's a, it's a big movement. I think eventually it'll become sort of more of the norm of a fourth type of first responder. You know, the, you've got your ambulance, police, fire, and mental health.
So I think, um, uh, inherent in that question, uh, is sort of a, a comment, uh, but I'll, I'll go ahead and make it so it's, it's obvious. So, you know, I, I think one of our objectives, uh, should be to, outsourced isn't the right word, but to recruit or spread the, the gospel here and, and be supportive and be a resource for other communities trying to start this. Not just doing it because it's sort of organically happening, but make it part of our mission to make the model grow elsewhere. That might require some resources, I would be willing to, uh, support putting those forward. My other question, Seth, maybe you can tackle this one more and we, uh, we might have some public comment that can address this too. As you guys know, I, uh, was a first responder for a while. I, I did Lifeline Ambulance in, in Prescott. My dad is a firefighter, my brother's a firefighter. I know how, uh, what a, what a burden it can be on, uh, an individual firefighter and a team throughout the day, throughout the week, throughout the year, uh, responding to calls that you're just, it's really not your place to, to answer or there's an incorrect response to what's going on. Talk to me about some of the tangibles, um, the real-world stuff and the intangibles that you guys are experiencing as professionals, uh, in terms of the alleviation that you're experiencing, uh, from your, your other role.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. The, um, very well spoken as far as just the intent and of why the firefighters get into the service for what they want to do. We all want to help. It's been identified that this might not be the best model because of that, and so that's what we're digging into with staff and, and fire administration. The, um, I think a lot of it comes down to maybe personality on some of these things. Um, and it's not a different mission that's being done, but we've seen, um, we've seen some morale issues with it. And that's when I speak on that direct support, the, um, that involves me more, just to have the, the interaction with those firefighters to, to see the bigger picture as far as what's going on, what we're trying to meet. We do have some more senior firefighters that, uh, love the unit. And the reason why is because ever since I've been here for the last eighteen years, this has been our main job type, sorry, main call type, is going to the man-down third-party calls. We have a unit in place that is alleviating those on the fire trucks. So some of the more senior captains and firefighters, um, see that big picture, see that real benefit. Where we're, we're trying to continue getting that buy-in is with those, the younger folks that are coming in, making sure they're aware that this is their job right now, the reasons why they, they need to do these things. And we're working to try to solve a community-wide issue here. Does that answer what you're looking for?
Yeah, I think so. It, it's an open-ended question. Uh, Brian, maybe you have some officer patients there too? And, and I, I wouldn't exclude, uh, police and the, the shared, um, alleviation that they're experiencing from this as well from the conversation, but thank you.
Councilmember McCarthy.
Well, thank you, Mayor. I just want to point out that I was on council when we decided to start this cares unit. And the support was, uh, very strong. And, uh, I can't speak for other council members, but speaking for myself, my support is still very strong. I think this is really important. And I might just add peripherally, about the same time that we talked about a cares unit or whatever we would end up calling it, um, there was discussion about defunding the police. And there was some support on council for that, minority support. It didn't go anywhere. And I'd just like to point out that no one sitting on this council supported that. Those counselors are gone. And because I think we strongly support our police, we support our fire department, we support our cares unit. And I think the fact that we have a no camping ordinance in this city gives us a responsibility to make sure that one way or the other, there is a place for people to go when they're in crisis. And, uh, I just might throw out that my wife has kind of adopted the homeless shelter. She literally takes truckloads of socks and pants and jackets and all kinds of stuff over there. And so, not that my wife is on council, because she's not, but our family is very supportive of these efforts that are going on. And I just want to say thank you to everyone involved, keep up the good work, and tell us what we can do to help you do this better. And, oh, I did have one question. Uh, you know, right now, this isn't twenty-four hours a day. Do you think at some point we need to make it twenty-four hours a day? Because sometimes at three in the morning, somebody has a crisis and they can't wait till eight in the morning or whatever time. So that's my last question and I yield, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember McCarthy. Uh, but as I showed on that Omega Dispatch after hours, right now we're a hundred and twelve over five months. Right now, I don't think personally that's about one call, one to one and a half calls per day. Um, I don't think that warrants it, but I don't want to speak for the chiefs here. Um, we're, we're going to be working with our new police chief to try to streamline those numbers and gather the data that their officers might be transporting those clients to the shelters, to the shelters. So, um, more to come on that. But our data right now, our data right now does not show that.
So what I'm sensing is you're saying that you guys focus on it in a day. And if there is an emergency a couple of times a week ever, possibly the police department can handle those because they're such a small number.
I'm not passing the buck off to the, the police department right now.
I see the chief in the back with a big grin on his face.
Yeah.
But anyway, uh, I'm just sort of thinking out loud and, uh, I want to be supportive of whatever's needed and if no more is needed, I accept that also. Thank you.
If I could follow up on that, is, is the, um, the after-hours, Omegas, those are the ones where we've identified a gap is the, that's where a fire truck and an ambulance goes. So the majority of the time is they go to the hospital there. So we're not diverting those calls away from the hospital.
Councilmember Sweet.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for being here tonight. It's been exciting to watch the program unfold and just kudos to everybody involved. I think it has made a huge difference. And I have a couple of questions. Thank you, Councilmember Aslan, for asking your question. Uh, that was one I was going to ask, but to piggyback on that, I'm wondering if you feel, Seth, that we need firefighters and EMTs on every call or is there a way to lessen your load when perhaps you're not needed, it really is just Taros?
I think we are, that's some of the stuff that we're talking about currently with the contract coming up. Uh, there's a program out there, uh, it's Emergency Medical Responder, which, um, I'm working with, uh, the fire lead over at CCC, they do teach it over there. And we're, we're still yet to determine if that can capture what we're looking for. It, it's not an EMT certification, but it's an easier process to get you, that could get you to a point where they can make those type of decisions. More to come on that, that's part of the, the conversations that we're having with that. So, um, we run into issues when, if we're talking higher level of care too with paramedics on it, we operate under a, a medical director and he won't sign off on those things. So, um, EMT right now, I think it's a good fit, but we're looking at other options that if, however this evolves into, maybe it could be a different type of medical person.
Okay, thank you. I look forward to the updates on that. And then my other question, looking at the graph and from my own experience having a business downtown, I feel like I'm seeing you're busier in the summer, there's an uptick. So if we are talking about expanding the program down the road, I'm wondering if maybe looking at just doing it during those summer months as a start might be an option.
Part of the conversation, just have a seasonal unit, it maybe offsets those other hours too.
Thank you. Councilmember Harris.
Thank you, Mayor. So I'm going to follow up a little bit on, um, Vice Mayor and Councilmember Sweet's questions. So let's go back to, um, the caretakers, so that's what I'm calling them, the responders. How often do they, um, what's their shift? I mean, how long are they assigned to the shift? Because they're regular, uh, not Taros, but the fire department. What's the rotation? It's six months on, three months off, two days on, how, how often do they?
Thank you for the question, Councilmember Harris. I'll try to simplify it a little bit. Um, currently, our firefighters that are on the fire trucks work forty-eight hours on, ninety-six hours off. During that time, we have a dedicated firefighter on the cares unit for ten hours at a time. And then after that ten-hour shift, they go back onto the fire truck. The rotation-wise is determined by our battalion chiefs of each shift. Some could be on it for, um, well, let me back up a little bit. The, when we have newer people come in that are getting off probation, they're going to be assigned to that unit for a month at a time. And the intent on that is the immersion, um, it's the, uh, knowledge of, of the data gathering and the reports, um, it's just the relationship with Taros on that one, just to, just to kind of just get set up for success with that. Other shifts will do it as just a rotation based on how many EMT firefighters we have. They could be on it for a tour and then not on it for another month or two. So it's, it's kind of, it's, it's not set in stone because it's variable based on the amount of EMT firefighters that are on a shift. But, um, I, if I had to stick my neck out and say, kind of give a timeframe, it's probably, they're probably on it once a month.
And then, so do they stay on that, uh, cares unit for the, all the time that they're at the fire department or with the fire department? I mean, is this just temporary? Do you do this for like three months and then once you serve your three months, then you go back to being just a, I don't want to say a plain old firefighter, because that's not right, but you know what I mean?
No, so the only thing that would change in their, in their rotation, um, if they advance in a promotion, if they advance to a paramedic, um, it's dedicated to EMT firefighters. If, if it's an engineer, we're not putting them on this unit because we, we need to utilize those to staff our fire trucks. But, um, they're, um, where was I going with that, sorry? They're, they're, they're not set on a time and then they're done with it. It's, it's, they're just going to keep rotating to spread the wealth.
Because the point that I'm getting at, I think you know where I'm going with this, is that if I train to be a firefighter, I don't, I didn't train to be on the cares unit. Does that make sense?
That does make sense.
And so I'm just wondering about how that affects morale. And don't hear me saying that this is not a good program, because that is not what I'm saying. Uh, what I want to know is how are we going to, are we going to lose people because of that? Because I want to be a firefighter, I don't want to, to do this particular job. And I know we all, in any job we have, we all, we have to do things that we don't like.
That's been one of my challenges is the morale, which is leading to some recruitment, retention issues. And we're, we're identifying those, we have identified those and we're, we're working to see if it's truly the cause.
Because it doesn't make them bad employees, it just means that, that's just not where their heart is in terms of the kind of work that they want to do. Okay. The next question that I have is what about safety? You know, do we run into issues with safety? I mean, because we've got, you know, EMT and I'm sure that some of them are very well-trained to handle themselves. Taros, I'm not sure what your training is in terms of safety because you don't know what you're going into when you go there, right?
Correct.
Okay. So how is that?
Yeah, and, um, on one of my slides, when I was talking about outcomes, I forgot to highlight this, but, um, as far as how the call ends, only one percent of the time is it that the care unit calls police because there's a safety concern. Um, so there's definitely a certain amount of screening that goes on the front end of, is this a safe situation to walk into? But what we really find is that when we come in with a approach of, we're here to help, we're here to listen, um, which is very different than what other first responders have to go with, it's nothing against them, that's just their protocols that usually when they arrive, it's, you know, one of two outcomes has to happen and we have to happen, it has to happen quickly. But when we come in with an approach of, we're here for you, how can we help? We just don't see, um, those safety issues come up that much. Probably easy for me to say, I don't know if, uh, Marge has other experiences, but, uh, but like I said, that, do you want to talk about? But, but, but the data does show that, you know, it's, it's very infrequent that we come across a situation where we feel really unsafe, but...
So a lot of times we do question that. And I know on fire, it's, you know, uh, black, to me, I, you can see it as like a black and white situation with fire, right? There's that manual, do this and do that. On the Taros side, it's more of, I think the approach of it, I've, I've done crisis work for seven years, uh, I've been a domestic violence advocate for eight years. And so I, seeing that and knowing what my safety looks like is a huge conversation I, we have on a daily with fire. And so I'm full-time on the Taros unit and then there's another, uh, person who works on the other end of the shift. So there's two Taros workers that are actually on there and we have the firefighters who do rotate out their time with us. When it comes to safety issues, that we do question that, we do like, okay, what is happening? But also I think we all have to understand, um, the approach of we making it. Um, sometimes when Flagstaff people are, are very prone to this idea of, and especially being a minority in this town, is when they're in your uniform, you're like, hey, what's going on, what, get up, we need to move you, right? That was that quick reaction to what's happening. And so when somebody's sleeping and somebody grabs me, touches me, I'm going to fight back, no matter what I'm going to do. So our approach is more of a quieter, more, um, responsive, like, hey, it's, what's going on? Hey, somebody called nine-one-one, are you okay? And so that's kind of that distance thing, um, and they're not moving, you know, they're still breathing. And so that question is like, hey, you know, you like touch some more part of their body and like, hey, are you, are you okay? Nine-one-one, somebody called. And so those are conversations we And so, those are conversations we always have. We're not there to like jump on them and move them and move them as quick as you would think on a fire unit or the guardian unit. So, a lot of that question comes up. And I can see and see the difference when it's like a Navo guy or a Hopi person, Paiute, Apache. It's kinda, I can see the difference. And so, sometimes when I know it's a Navo guy or somebody we've seen before, it's like, hey, it's K'kwa'dina, you know, like, I'm trying to tell them, like, let's get up, like, what's happening? What, what, what do we need to best support you? And so, we do keep a distance. And if they do, you know, move around quicker than we are, we're already moving back. We're not gonna engage in a conversation. We give them that autonomy. We give them that, that person. And so, if somebody's moving quick, we're gonna quick move back and say, hey, you know, this looks like a police issue. Person doesn't wanna leave, they're being aggressive. We're gonna back up, and we're gonna leave, and then let it be a police issue. So, that's what we call back to dispatch and let them know. But in five minutes, they may get up and move away. And so, it's always that conversation, yes. But I feel like if we went on every call that pushes that safety issue, a lot of them would have been upgraded to PD, which we don't want, you know?
And thank you. And then, I'm just gonna ask a question, and I'm not expecting an answer. Because it's loaded.
Yeah, it's a, it's a slow process. We don't have uniform on, it's a huge thing. I feel like that was a huge conversation before, is that's why we wear the T-shirts. And our approach is a lot more quieter than what's happening. So, I feel like they're really calm with us.
Thank you. Yeah, that works. Last question, no answer needed, just throwing it out there. Do we need a detox center?
Please.
Answer it if you want to, but I wasn't really expecting an answer, because I think I know what the answer is. But anyway, it sounded like from one of the stories that that would have been more viable than the guidance center at that time, because some of it was related to that, but some of it, just some other kinda center other than the guidance center. But anyway, that's a whole long conversation, and we're not gonna do that tonight. But thank you.
Councilmember Matthews.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to just also thank you guys for what you do and how this has evolved. And I love hearing the stories of compassion, because that's really, makes the difference and can make the difference in encouraging someone to maybe not, you know, continue on a certain path and when they feel like somebody actually cares that they're alive. So, just thank you for bringing stories and statistics and data. I really appreciate it. It means a lot.
All right. Thank you. Oh, oh, we do have public comment. Casey Gonzalez.
Has this water been drank up here? Or is this a freebie? Do we know? Oh, it's perfect. All right, Mayor and Council, thank you. Casey Gonzalez, President of United Flagstaff Firefighters, IFF Local 1505. Have met most of you. Several, we have not engaged anything further than this. Haven't had the opportunity yet. A background on just what I represent, the near 200 members in the flagstaff area that are paid professional firefighters with the United Flagstaff Firefighters that feed into the 8,000-member Professional Firefighters of Arizona and into the International Association of Firefighters, the 340,000 members in the U.S. and Canada. And so, it's the representation of those members here in my role as the President of Local 1505 and speaking specifically tonight to the cares piece and the 105 members with flagstaff. And just two quick points I'm gonna make, not gonna rehash stuff, not gonna go over what you've already heard. First point, no one's arguing the need for a cares unit, an alternative response, low-acuity unit to non-emergent calls. I think that's been well-established for a long time. The fact that we have made a significant push to accomplish that has been awesome. With it being presented to the fire department and the firefighters that are on there have done an exceptional job with something that was not in their wheelhouse when they came into the position or coming into the position, which has been referenced by a few. So, there's no debate on that at all, that the need for some sort of an alternative care response, low-acuity unit. The second point I'm gonna make, and it kinda hits on Seth's last point on the PowerPoint and some questions that have been asked as well, the appropriate deployment model. It's, there are conversations going on. Some of you have referenced that, conversations with city leadership, as well as fire administration, PD administration. Brian talked about it. Flagstaff is a caring and compassionate community and wants to provide the right kind of care. Councilmember House hit on it. Non-emergency responses for our emergency response team, looking at the full scope of the program. Again, going back to that right kind of care and the deployment model that's happening with it. And there's been several references to that of the fire department, fire service, and where that falls within it. A couple of days from the Fourth of July, paraphrasing a Thomas Jefferson quote, difference of opinion doesn't equal difference of purpose. I encourage you all with city, with fire leadership, to dig into what the right deployment model is within this program that's there that is becoming successful and what will then push it to the point of, like Councilmember House said, the full scope of the program. That's what I got for you in my three minutes. Hope you all have a good night, staying to the hours of seven.
We're not done with you yet.
Oh, sorry. Okay.
Do you have some specific concerns or some specific suggestions?
No, and I think there are conversations happening within the city manager's office, as well as fire administration, and questions that you've hit on it. It's just, I continue, right, I ask that you continue to look into what is the best deployment model for this. We've had success, there's been success stories. As firefighters, especially as flagstaff firefighters, we're gonna show up, and we're gonna adapt and overcome and solve the problem. And so, whether something's in our lane or not, we're gonna show up and do the right thing. You know, our mission statement is to provide exceptional customer service to the community, the visitors and the surrounding region. You know, city mission statement, protect and enhance quality of life for all. We're gonna do that every time we get called out, whether it's our lane or not. So, I just encourage you to continue to vet the program, vet the future of it, along with taros, with city or with fire, police, that the appropriate model is being laid out and put forward.
Thank you. Appreciate that. I don't think there's any additional questions.
I appreciate it.
Thank you. All right, so B, sharing information about crisis mobile services?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Katie Brandis. I'm the Communications Manager at the Flagstaff Police Department. I'm here tonight with Bill Mitchell, and we have some exciting updates coming for our 911 center that we wanted to share with you. And thank you to Seth and Brian and the taros team, because it gives me the perfect segue to talk about crisis resources in our 911 center. I'm gonna give a little bit of a history, some numbers, and I will then pass it off to Bill, so he can give you an overview of what resources he has secured for us in our center. So, our center answers approximately 300,000 phone calls a year. Many of our calls are people experiencing some sort of mental health crisis. In the past, I've been a dispatcher in, for 20 years. So, in the past, it was a response of either a law enforcement officer or a law enforcement officer, fire, truck, and an ambulance. And it's not giving them the correct resources that we need. So, we've evolved a little bit the last few years. We obviously got the care unit, which is a big help for us. And then, in 2020, in 2022, we partnered with Solari. They are the mental health services for the state of Arizona. And we are able to triage calls in our center and pass them off to Solari to be handled over the phone. They're able to deescalate a lot of the phone calls that we transfer to them. And if they need additional resources, they can dispatch a taros mobile crisis unit. And if they need other assistance, if the person is a danger to anybody else or themselves, then they will call us and request a police officer to go and assist them. So, on our slide is kind of how we triage calls that come into our center. This is not for medical-related calls. This is strictly for mental health-related calls. We use a completely different program for any kind of, for EMS calls. So, we're gonna figure out if the person is having a mental crisis. Are they an immediate danger to themselves or others? Are there weapons or injuries? If not, we're going to transfer them to Solari, and they will handle it from there. So, on the slide is an example of some of the calls that we transfer over to Solari. A lot of them are suicidal people, no plan, no weapons. Depressed people, people experiencing a new crisis in their life, like a divorce, or they're experiencing homelessness for the first time. Or we have frequent callers that kinda fall into that mental health realm that we give to them. And third-party callers. So, somebody says they see somebody on Snapchat or Facebook, or a family member has called, and they're concerned about their mental health because they're making statements. We can transfer those calls over to them as well. And then incorrigible juveniles, they're able to deescalate that and get the family resources as well. So, you heard about the care teams, so I don't really need to rehash that. But we do have a taros mobile team that our officers utilize on a lot of calls. When they do have to respond to those calls, that there's a certain safety aspect to it. And then, Bill will talk about the additional team that we're getting. So, I am going to go ahead and give it over to Bill, so he can give you an overview of the crisis system and our new resources coming.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Bill Mitchell. I am a retired deputy sheriff with Coquenino County. This company came to me with a plan and a process to assist with mental health. Over my career in law enforcement, the need for mental health in Coquenino County is huge. It's a very large county. Being able to see it firsthand and see how this system works, it is truly remarkable, and it's making great changes. I'm gonna back up a little bit and give you a little bit of information on Solari. So, Solari is the statewide crisis line. They provide crisis services all across the state. I am with the REBA, and we cover 12 of the 15 counties of the state. So, I support Coquenino County, Alapai County, and my title is First Responder Liaison. But what I do is I work within the criminal justice system, both with all first responders, all the crisis teams, to make a better crisis system, a bigger net, if you will. So, this slide here is strictly just a structure. We got a contract through Access to go forth and do great things in the name of crisis. Yes, we're an insurance company, and they do do physical health, things like that. I don't touch any of that. I strictly work with first responders and mental health-specific, and covering all crisis needs within Coquenino County. Our approach to crisis is very simple. Everyone's eligible. If you're in the state, if you're in the county, you're eligible for all of these services. Doesn't matter any kind of insurance status, legal status. If you're here and you experienced a crisis episode, it's covered for the first 23 hours and 59 minutes. Our definition for a crisis is anything outside that person's ability to cope. I give you a second to think about that. That's pretty broad, right? That encompasses a lot of different things. A six-year-old autistic kid having issues with tying his shoes that day, that's a crisis, okay? We can handle, and we can help that. We utilize a no-wrong-door policy. It's 24/7 crisis line. It's a three-pronged approach. Between the crisis line, the crisis mobile teams, and the stabilization unit, the guidance center, we work hand-in-hand to try to get these, these folks that need crisis help covered and into services as quick as possible. Crisis will never refuse. If you hear a no when it comes to anything crisis-related, please let me know. Please gather my phone number and my email at the end of this. If you hear a no when it comes to a crisis situation, I need to know, because that's something I can help fix. Community stabilization is pretty easy on, on the terminology of it. It's simply working with people where they're at. It's easier to work with them in the community than take them out of the community, stabilize them, and put them back into the same situation. We wanna work with the whole person right then. Real-time escalation is pretty easy. I'm a team of five. We're all former first responders. We work 24/7, just like law enforcement and first responders do. If there's a crisis issue or a crisis situation that comes up, there's a mechanism for first responders to get ahold of us to help fix that system right then. We don't wait for the next day. Our goal is to reduce unnecessary detentions and the use of the hospital as an emergency room or basically a staging area. We wanna stop the revolving door and the usage of 911, which is why we brought this additional service that we're, I'll tell you about here in a minute, to the Flagstaff 911 Center. We utilize that no-wrong-door when it comes to increasing the use of the crisis system, because we do want that three-pronged approach. We collaborate and communicate with all first responders, so that they have better access to get folks into crisis services around the county. I have developed things for the county, county-wide, the crisis protocols. It's simply a roadmap. It's 28 pages. It's an easy read, but it tells you all the ins and outs of the new crisis services that are available and the new process. We do have crisis meetings that I hold quarterly. I have invited some of the council to attend those meetings, but we go over the data and the stats for the entire county. We break down things by ZIP codes, particular events, but we cover all of the crisis information for the entire county. We do have crisis materials, and you might see them around town. I am constantly putting out flyers and crisis cards around town. And we do provide trainings that are free of cost. We do provide mental health first aid, crisis system overview, five skills resiliency that I have placed into the Coquenino County Sheriff's Office to help officers with the empathy bucket when it gets too full and how to process those, those issues and problems. Sequential intercept model is pretty simple on its face. I'm sure you've all have seen one of these. This is just where we wanna catch people. It's right up front, before they get too far down in the criminal justice system, and it's harder for them to get services. We wanna work with people on the crisis line, even with local law enforcement, to try to get folks, when they do things, when they're having a crisis episode, yes, some of it can be against the law. And yes, there is a mechanism, mechanism to arrest them. I did that personally, because there was simply no other process. We now have a process in place. The crisis line, that's a brand-new phone number. That was mandated by Access. The 877 number that everybody's pretty familiar with in the county, it's still operational, but we're transitioning folks over to the statewide crisis line. Like I said, we're the REBA for the north and the south of the state. Even central, which is covered by Mercy Care, uses the same number, so it's statewide. It is confidential. Solari is our provider. They can, like Katie mentioned, they can take time to triage a call. A typical dispatch call in the police department is hurry up, get off the phone, we got another call. These folks are licensed professionals that take their time to really dive in and help stabilize until a higher level of care can get there. Crisis mobile teams, obviously, we have taros here in the greater flagstaff area that covers most of the county. We do have CBI in the north, because typically, you can't run a crisis response and not have additional services. That's a faraway area. So, we have CBI up there, and we have Spectrum that covers, have a Supai reservation. They already have a relationship established with them, but, so we have additional crisis teams. Typically, when they respond, it's one to two people. There are peers, mental health peers, that are in those teams as well. And our contracted rate for response time is 60 minutes in city, 90 minutes in county. I've been in this county, and there's no way that you can get to certain places in 90 minutes. Right now, we're averaging 24 minutes throughout the county. We are constantly looking for co-locations. We do co-locate on the Hopi Reservation. We do have a crisis team up there that taros has stationed up there to help with those. So, we are constantly looking for co-locations for a faster response. Some of the expansion that we have brought in, we are planning for a deployment for tablets for wildfire, for emergency requests, for crisis services. That's new to the state. That's something that typically hasn't been done. We did secure a grant through the Bipartisan Safer Communities Act. We did secure a grant through the Bipartisan Safer Communities Act where we have been able to expand, adding two crisis people from, or excuse me, one crisis person from Solari in Coquenino and Yavapai County. So the calls that are generated here locally will go to the person in Solari or within the 911 center that is an employee of Solari to handle those calls locally. So we're getting that local connection brought up here. As of June, we have a dedicated 911 crisis mobile team that will respond 24/7. We have an added additional team to cover a full 24/7. We've also added 24/7 crisis team to the Colorado Strip area. Everything from Colorado City to the northern part of the Grand Canyon. They now cover that entire area, which is brand-new. We've never had a crisis team up there. Those, again, are local people that we're bringing in. We have funding for two one-day emergency management crisis conferences. The first one will be held August 29th at NAU High Country Conference Center. That is confirmed, we finally got that nailed down. That is a simple one-day crisis emergency planning session that I would highly suggest you attend. Some things we have on the horizon, we have a 911 Familiar Folks Program where we partner with the P S A, which we've already done. And we integrate a lot of those callers to be able to handle the resiliency part of the information that they're getting. We have additional ops units coming in, CBI is coming in, that's community bridges. They're bringing a youth and adult observation unit that should be scheduled to be open sometime in the winter of this year. We have additional programs on the horizon that are, I can't really give them out yet. But it's enhancing the crisis systems that we have in place now. Second responder program that we have finally got stood up, Southwest Behavioral has a youth component, they're adding an adult component. What this program does is it gives crisis services and allows six weeks of crisis help to locate services to get people back on track. It's similar to what Victim Witness will do, but it's peers from the community and it's folks from the community that'll help. Spectrum has a youth second responder program that they can provide. Spectrum comes out of cottonwood. And Transintimate for the L G B T Q I A plus focus team, that is brand-new. That is something that, again, we're the first county in the state to have this type of peer setup for a second responder program. And that is all the information I have.
Does anybody have any questions for either of us?
Yes, we have a question from Councilmember House.
First of all, thank you both for this presentation. I am thrilled by a lot of what you've presented. Outside of my work on council, I also work with an organization that's currently partnered with SAMSA to increase access to recovery and crisis response. So all of this is really exciting towards that. Bill, you kind of answered my question earlier in your comments about having peers involved, but I'm wondering, to what extent is peer leadership built into these models that are coming for Coquenino?
Access has mandated that we have 25% of our crisis mobile teams as peers. So as we're moving, this is, again, is another first step. They are licensed and credentialed to be peer support as well as have mental health degree experience. So we're bringing vetted people in that have lived life, so.
Great. And then my only other question is just about how this model extends into some of the community focus that you shared. You talked about being focused on keeping people within the community and rather than taking them out and then placing them right back into the place where crisis may have happened or been triggered for them. I'm wondering if this involves any sort of look at peer crisis respite models or integrating like actual community centers where people can go and have access within their neighborhoods or within their communities of reference? Is that part of this at all or is that something that would be maybe more down the road?
So we are constantly looking for new ways to improve the system within each county. Each county has a unique approach. I cover Coquenino and Yavapai Counties and I can tell you, they're vastly different. Peer support in the Flagstaff area has been harder to get. And we're actively, I've been actively working with the Northern Arizona Peer and Family Coalition to get another branch brought up here. They're a great resource and additional peer advocates for folks that really need to talk to somebody that has been there.
Great. And I think I lied. This is my final question. Just in terms of the meeting, I believe you and I had connected previously on that monthly meeting, and I may still be on the list, but if we're interested in attending those and aren't on the list already, how do we get information for that?
Just email me. Please grab my email. It's the easiest and quickest way. If you want to be added to the invite, and I would suggest that at least somebody from your staff grab the information. We do, when we put out the minutes, we include all of the data and the stats. If there's something specific that you need, we can also include that as well. But we gather a ton of data that I can't even, just to show you a slideshow on the data we collect is immense, and that will take some time.
Is that it? Councilmember House?
Thank you, that's all for me. Yes, that's all for me, thank you.
Additional comments or questions? I will just say thank you very much for this presentation and this is absolutely what has been needed. And Katie, I am always just amazed that your staff is able to, under such pressure, manage this kind of flow and know where to send someone and what kind of resources they might need. That takes nerves of steel and a very compassionate heart. I know it's a very stressful job.
It's really going to be beneficial to have an actual crisis worker in the dispatch center rather than transferring them out twofold because we'll have somebody there that can take the calls off of us. But if something happens, like if we take a bad call, if something happens to one of our field units, there's going to be support there that we haven't had before. So like I said, I'm really excited about this. I looked into having this four years ago and it just wasn't possible because of funding. So to have it paid for through a grant is just something I'm really excited about, so.
And this is paid for for two years?
So the grant runs for 18 months. And then at that time, we'll reevaluate and see if we can fold it into our normal operations, which I don't see that we'll have an issue with it. The call volume's there and I'm sure we can pick up some more of the low-hanging fruit calls that are there. So I think it's going to be a great opportunity for Flagstaff Police Department, the Sheriff's Office, the local area to have this resource available.
Wonderful. Thank you. Okay, moving down to item number 12, open call to the public. I do not see any. Then we have informational items too from Mayor, Council and staff. Let's start with Councilmember House.
Sorry, I just lost the meeting. So just a few things, I just want to give a reminder to council that this month is also BIPOC Mental Health Awareness Month. So please do some reading and research there where you can. Today is also the 60th anniversary of the Civil Rights Act of 1964 being passed, which ended legal discrimination based on race, color, religion, sex or national origin. Additional classes have been added to that in the years since, but just a reminder of the importance of that landmark piece of legislation to our examination of our local housing concerns. That is it for me, outside of, I may still be on remotely tomorrow, but I look forward to the conversation that will continue at that point. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Sweet?
Thank you. I was able to do two different tours last week, one of the Inter Basin Waterline Project and the JWP extension. And I just wanted to thank staff and everyone involved in those tours, they were very helpful. And if you haven't done them yet, I would get out there and do it. Parade, 7:30 on Thursday. You all got an email from Sean, but I sure could use the help at that time of the morning. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember McCarthy?
Nothing tonight, see you tomorrow.
Vice Mayor?
Nothing.
Councilmember Harris? Nothing. Councilmember Matthews?
Just two things. I was on that JWP tour, it was very enlightening, informative. It was a great walk in the rain. The weather was nice. And then I was really excited to coordinate a meeting between sustainability and one of our larger nonprofits to start talking about converting to more efficiencies and all-electric. And it was a really good meeting. And we have a couple of follow-up meetings already scheduled to do a master plan with them. It could be a big shift in helping us reach our sustainability, carbon neutrality goals.
I have nothing. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Heidi Hansen will be acting city manager next week during the work week. Hopefully things are quiet for her and everybody. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, well, we're adjourned.